Okay.
So my goal is to...
You've got to be done by then, before then.
Good afternoon and welcome to this meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission. Before we get started, just want to make a few housekeeping reminders. First of all, if you're interested in speaking to the commission directly, we have forms located right with some of our staff up front that you can fill out to make sure that we can call on you at the appointed time that we are on that item. Please keep your comments to five minutes or less. We also ask that if you're here with a group of people, that you appoint a spokesperson to represent all of those views so we can hear it all at once. We also want to avoid any repetition in saying the, in addressing some of your concerns. If your neighbor mentioned it, then we know that it's an issue and we intend to try to address it in our, to consider it at least as we are voting here. Like anywhere else, our request is that you just follow the golden rule and be respectful of us, be respectful of the process, and be respectful of each other. Before we fully get started in the meeting, I do want to take this moment to recognize Paula Hurst, who does, who has done a phenomenal job working with this commission over the years, but she's been promoted. She's moving on up to bigger and better things beyond this commission, but I just wanted to make sure to let the audience and all of us appreciate, show appreciation to Paula for all that she has done and congratulate her. Okay. So I know that we're still, we're still, we've got someone still learning the ropes, so we'll need your patience today as we are working through all of the technology moving forward with the meeting. So continuing forward with our business, we'll begin with the receipt of the minutes from the September 22 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move to receive the minutes from the September 22 meeting.
Commissioner Claire has moved that we receive the minutes of the September 22 meeting. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes. We are in line for continuance requests, beginning with uncontested requests.
I have several today. The first is item 34, S.P.U.D. 1451, request deferral to October 27. Item 35, C. 7476, deferred to October 27. Item 36, P.U.D. 1908, deferred to December 8. And item 37, PC 10-826. And 38, PC 10-871, will be deferred indefinitely.
Thank you. Is there anyone that wanted to be heard on any of those items that are listed as uncontested requests for continuance? Seeing none, I think we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the uncontested continuance requests as read.
Commissioner Claire has moved that we grant the uncontested continuance requests as read. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes. We are now ready for new requests.
There are three new requests. First is item 5, KC 7491, request deferral to November 10. Item 24, S.P.U.D. 1454, deferred to October 27. And item 28, S.P.U.D. 1448, to October 27.
Thank you. Are there any new continuance requests?
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. On item 26, there was protest that is here that I was unaware of, so we would ask to defer that item to the October 27 Planning Commission meeting in an effort to go meet with the neighbors and see if we can't figure out their concerns and meet them.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wanted to be heard on any of those items? And those are item, item 5, item 24, item 26 now, and item 28. Seeing none, I think we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant the new continuance requests as read.
And the motion is to grant the new continuance requests as amended with the addition of item 26. Is there a second? Let's see if we can get it. Second by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes when available. There we go. And the motion passes. Our next item for consideration is the consent docket.
Items 1 through 7 are on the consent docket. It was our PC 10-845, request to rezonate 21, or excuse me, 218 Southeast 70th, Senvia Street from R1 to R2. C. 7485, final plan of Tuscany Lakes Phase 3. C. 7486, final plan of Native Plains, Section 5. C. 7490, final plan of Market at Kelly, 122nd. Item 5, C. 7491, final plan of Twin Silos, Section 3. Item 6, C. 7492, final plan of Huntington Ridge, Phase 1. And item 7, C. 7493, final plan of Wheeler District, Phase 3.
Thank you. And we are continuing item 5, so we are, we will, this consent docket will not include item 5 since we've already approved that continuance. But I believe we're in line for a motion to approve the consent docket.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve the consent docket excluding item 5.
Commissioner Claire moves to approve the consent docket, removing item 5 from that printed list as it is being continued. It's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes when available.
It's been deferred.
And it has been approved, I think. And now we are in line for items requiring a separate vote. We'll begin with item 8.
First item for public hearing is item 8, and it's a P.U.D. 1780, specific plan number one. It's a specific plan pursuant to the approval of P.U.D. 1780 at 11300 West Britton Road.
Thank you. Is there an applicant present?
Good afternoon, Mark Grubbs, 1800 South Serra Road, on behalf of the applicant. This is item 8, sorry. This is the specific plan. This is the northwest, southeast corner of Mustang Road and Britton Road. It's approximately a 12-acre tract. P.U.D. was done for this for a commercial development on this portion of the property. This is just the east side of it, which is a mini storage warehouse. We are in accordance with the P.U.D. and would just ask for your approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is in Ward 1, so Commissioner Claire, would you like to begin the discussion on this item?
Yeah, I've reviewed, have it, pretty, it seems pretty straightforward, so I'm prepared to make a motion unless anyone else has any other comments.
I have a question. Is this mini storage going to be an extension or an enlargement of the existing mini storages there? Is it completely different company or?
There's, unless you know something that I know, I don't think there's a mini storage on that site.
Maybe I'm mixed up about exactly where we're located here.
This is the southeast corner of Mustang and Britton.
Sorry.
Okay. Hey, it wouldn't surprise me if I didn't know something.
All right. Any other, any other questions from commissioners?
Anyone here to speak?
Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on item 8, P.U.D. 1780, the specific plan number one?
All right. If nothing, I'll move, motion to approve or recommend approval of P.U.D. 1780, specific plan 01.
And the motion is to approve of the specific plan for P.U.D. 1780. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes. We're ready for item 9.
Item 9 is PC 10-846, application by Trivect to development to rezonate 2508 Northwest 39th from O2 to C3.
Is there an applicant present?
Afternoon. Basically...
And I'm sorry, sir, could you give us your name and address for the record?
Oh, sorry. Vincent Percia. Your home address or the, any address. 3927 12th Avenue Northwest in Norman, Oklahoma.
Thank you.
Zip code 73069.
Thank you. Please tell us about your project.
All right. Basically, I own 2504 and 2508 on the interstate, I-44 Service Road, and it's zoned office and then the other one is zoned office slash residence. I have no idea how they take a lot and split it up into three pieces, but I'm trying to get where I can do retail on those two pieces of property. It's, it's right on the Service Road. It's kind of where I am. Is there anything?
Okay. Well, this is in, this is in Ward 2, so Commissioner Powers, would you like to begin our discussion on this item?
Yes. I contacted Mr. Percia earlier today to discuss this item with him. I really would like to see this item continued so that we can meet and discuss it. I really think it needs to be put into an S.P.D. You maybe remember that just last time we met, I believe, we entertained an application on the north side of Northwest 39th Street. It's not exactly the same. It was a large office building, but it was office, so lesser intensity, and it was further away from residential than this is. So I have some concerns. I understand that he has some interest in preserving like an Airbnb use on part of it and some sort of commercial use on the other part of it. I just think straight C3 is too intense for this particular location. It's not that I think we can't get to whatever it is he really needs for the property and it's, you know, future value, but I'm not comfortable with a straight C3 at this location. So that's what I would like to see done with it.
And I appreciate that, Commissioner Powers. And just, just for the sake of the commission and the, our audience being fully informed about the impact if we were to approve this application as is, maybe JJ, Sarah, someone from our staff, talk to us about how this, how this would be, this development would be impacted by the fact that it abuts the residential. Since it's C3, I know that there's some, some other mitigation that's automatically done, but, and I think, I think it'd be helpful for this discussion for us to fully understand what that is.
The only, the mitigation would, would be a site-proof fence against the residential and the first five feet would be a landscape buffer with trees. Then the height in C3 is a step, there's a step down from residential, but it would allow, of course, all of the normal C3 commercial uses.
Which is substantial.
Which are fairly intense, like 12 pages of them here, so.
I have one more, a couple of, to add to what she's just said. I have, the owners next to me also would like to join in, they have filed for this application, the same thing with Janice Power 17 years ago. And, and she did the same thing, which is basically said, I want to continue, or push it off to come and talk, and 17 years later, they're still with their file open. It's a commercial strip since then. Walmart has come in, Lowe's has been built from that 17 years. So that whole strip, if you look at it, is development. Up the street, they have all commercial. On the right of us is all commercial. There's a gas station, there's a big printing building, and along that Service Road, they all back up to residential areas. And I am trying to be a good citizen. I painted the building. I'm not ripping anything down. I'm not changing the structure or anything. I just need to be able to do retail business, which is what they're also looking for. And if there's buffers, like he mentioned, I have absolutely no problem putting in whatever buffers. And I know when you zone commercial, because it's zoned C3, don't mean I can go put up a nuclear plant on a C3. You still have to go through a building permit. You have to submit what you're going to do. So let's say 20 years from now, you rip down those two buildings, I can't put up whatever I want. I still have to go through building permits, applying for whatever you're trying to do with that property. So you're never going to just infringe on the folks. I'm trying to help continue that development because if you look at it, with the Route 66, they've done all the road improvements, all the sidewalks. You look between May and Penn, all the buildings are going commercial on that strip. They're all trying to develop. I mean, I love the homeless folks, but I'm trying to, to, to keep it because we have a problem where they sleep on the porch on those properties before I purchase to take care of it. So I'm trying to help the tax base. I'm trying to help develop. Like I said, if she drove by, you would see the building painted. It's not going to be tore down. And like I said, we have neighbors on either side of us. Like I said, her is 17 years. years, and, and I don't want to be seventeen years later having this conversation.
Okay, well, just for the sake.
And I do, I do mean that with respect to everybody out there.
Understandable, but just, let's be clear about the process and where we are right now. On the consideration of this item, right now, we're taking questions from the commission. There will be an opportunity for members of the audience or for the commission to make their comments as well. We are taking questions, but I will say, just to be clear about the process, Commissioner Powers alone does not have the authority to continue any project. The commission has the authority to continue projects and to make a determination about the zoning. I believe, based on, and I'll let Commissioner Powers, does a great job speaking for herself, but what I heard from her statement wasn't to eliminate your uses, it was about what the impact of changing this rezone to C3 will have on the neighbors to the south. We don't want to create a situation that makes them more uncomfortable than the situation that they have now. As you just heard from JJ, the, the only mitigation that would be done by, if we were to approve this as you have requested, would only be a five-foot landscape buffer and a limitation on the building height. We don't know, and we're going to test, we're going to see how the commission and the audience or any of the neighbors feels about that today, but that is the question for the commission. And so it, as Commissioner Powers has recommended, the possibility of a PUD could allow us to then make these specific things that you're saying, you don't want to build a nuclear plant, and I, I got that.
I, I guess.
But, but, but there are other uses in C3 that are allowed by right that may be detrimental to the neighbors to the south, and we want to be aware of that, because we're not approving whether or not you get to build certain structures. We're saying you get the, all the rights attached to C3, and what, what Commissioner Powers is saying is if you go through the SPD process, we could narrowly tailor it to ensure that your concerns are being met and those of the neighbors as well. So that's the purpose of that suggestion, but, but she alone does not have the authority to determine who, which items get continued and which one doesn't. The commission holds that. That being said, are there any questions from commissioners at this point?
I had the same concerns, so.
As do I.
I have a question. Are the mitigating measures automatic? Is that, is that as upright with the, okay.
Those do not require any TV or anything. Any other questions, Don?
You do understand what the PUD is, right? What you're asking for in the timeline?
Yes, the development change, and like I said, I, I understand what, what her concerns are, and I'm willing to do whatever it takes, whether it's ten feet, whether it's an eight-foot fence, whatever it takes to make everybody in the area compliant and happy, I am willing to do that. I don't have any objections or any issues. You could limit it to a one-story rebuilding if they tear down that and redevelop. I don't have a problem with any of those aspects or limitations, because like I said, I'm not tearing anything down, I'm not, that's for the future folks to decide. All I'm trying to do is keep in tune with that. Like I said seventeen years ago, you know, highway come through, you know, it's progress, but we want to do it in a respectful, tasteful manner, and I appreciate that. And like I said, I will do whatever you guys need to make this carry forward, and I'm sure my neighbors would love to, to, to have their, their seventeen-year-old application that is still open.
They certainly have that authority, that ability.
Let me say, if, if the gentleman who lives it, or who owns the property at 122512 is interested, still interested in rezoning his property.
He is, he's right there.
That's great news to me. I remember very well when that application came through. These properties, I don't know how many of you are familiar with this area, but there are a lot of little, small businesses, mostly in existing residential structures that have converted, they're virtually all west of here, office uses up to where the car dealership is, which, you know, is probably a poster child for impact on surrounding residential areas. So I remember very clearly telling the gentleman that owns the property at 2512 that it would be beneficial to him if he were able to join with his neighbors and have a larger tract of property to develop that would permit him to, you know, provide for some of the buffers that are needed and to get his traffic flow onsite rather than on the Service Road and so on. So if, if there are more people who want to join this application, it might make it easier. But the idea that he's okay with these buffers, and I explained this to him when I spoke to him this morning, is great, but they can't be made a requirement of straight C3 zoning.
Exactly, an existing request.
So I mean, that's exactly why it needs to be put into an SPD, in my opinion.
Okay, well, let's see what, if there's anyone who wanted to be heard on this item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to be heard on item eight? That's PC 10846. Please, please come to the front. You have, you have, is that, did I name the wrong item? Sorry, sorry, wrong item, item eight. Please, give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Yes, my name is David Battle, and I'm at 2512, that Ms. Powers was mentioned there. As far as I'm concerned, I have the application, it's still open. Ms. Powers basically just held off. She's told us to wait, and it's sat here for seventeen years, so we're ready to go.
Well, I would, I would recommend, I'm not sure, I mean, I know we have city staff here, but I can assure you that Commissioner Powers does not have the authority to prevent you from bringing your application to this commission. She does not have that authority, you have that right to file it, there is nothing that is prohibiting you, as far as I know, no legal authority that she has that would prevent you from bringing that request to this commission.
What I'm saying, as far as I'm concerned, it's still filed, it's just never been enacted.
Well, then, that sounds like a great, I know that we have staff that are available that may be able to help you. I don't know if someone can visit with you about what next steps you need to take to ensure that we can review it, but again, we're, we're, we are here to talk about item nine, and so do you have any comments related to, to item nine and this specific request? I, I look forward to being able to consider your request once it's, once we figure out what the issue is that's preventing it from getting to us.
Well, we are the adjoining neighbor to the west, and we feel like this would be an improvement to our property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I would say one other thing, if I could.
Please.
I probably should have led with this. I don't know if you've noticed the photograph, the aerial that's attached to your staff report. This property looks 200 times better than it has for years and years and years. It is true, true that Mr. Percia has gone in, cleared the property, he's cleaned it up, and painted, and freshened up, and it looks great compared to what it's looked like for years and years and years, and I, he deserves a lot of credit for that.
I, I appreciate that. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard on item nine, PC 10846? And I will give the applicant, would you like to make any closing statements before we go to hearing from the commission? Because at that point, it will be the commission's final say on, on what we decide here.
Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate you.
Please come to the microphone, we have, we have my, we have a few people watching, watching the home, they want to hear.
I just want to tell you guys, I'm a good citizen, I am going to do the best for the neighborhood, for the development. I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity to, to, to keep things moving along, progress for the area, and like I said, it's I-44, it's a Service Road, it's, it's, it's commercial, and I would really like your votes.
Well, I, I just want to make sure that you're aware, because this will impact what the commission, the commission's discussion.
Yes.
The issue will be, you know, that we, we don't have the final authority on this, we are a recommending body of the city council when it comes to, to the rezoning.
Right.
Our options are, if you are not, it seems that you're not interested in take, in taking a continuance to create an SPUD, so the question for the commission will be, do we recommend approval or do we recommend denial? Or do we recommend that we, we send you to take a continuance and consider the SPUD? So those will be our choices. If you're saying you're not willing to take the SPUD, there may be some commissioners whose opinion is that we should recommend denial of your application, because we'd like to see the mitigation measures beyond the five-foot, five-foot landscape buffer and limitation on the building height, so that we can protect the neighbors to the south. So that's, that's the issue for us.
Right.
Your request as is does not give us the authority to make those specialized requests to protect those people to the south.
And, and I just want to clarify for the applicant, I mean, he's, you've stated that you're willing to do all these things.
Right.
That's what, that's what if we were to view this as a SPUD allows us to do, is to work those in. So if you're willing to do those things, then we need to do that through the SPUD process.
Process.
But it's going to take a little bit longer, probably another four weeks.
Yeah.
So if you can wait, if you're not under time constraints, I would highly suggest that. Otherwise, if you're telling us that you don't want to wait, then we're going to have to vote, you know, on, on just the straight rezoning, and I'm not sure, you know.
It's just that I'm, I'm concerned and scared, because they've been seventeen years.
I know, and I, I think that's a special, I think that's a very special circumstance.
But that's what, that's what I'm, that's what I'm, I'm looking at.
I, I can, well.
It's a definite date.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to put a date on this, so you, you have the opportunity to be back here in four weeks. Six, okay, I'm going to, I'm going to let staff determine the length of time.
[laughing].
But, but it's not seventeen years.
All right, well, I mean, if you guys. Commissioner Hinkle, do you want to?
And one of the things we haven't talked about here is the C3 zoning carries with the property even if you sell it next week. So the next guy without coming in front of us could put a Taco Bell in there, and the people behind it are just stuck with a Taco Bell. The spud allows us to make sure the Taco Bell never goes in there, and what you intend to go in there is as intensive of a use as can ever go. So as me, I'm for the continuance, I will vote a denial on a straight C3. I'm one of eight, but that's how I would vote if, if we were going to vote this in as a straight C3, so.
I guess you're backing me into a corner to visit with you at the SBC, and if that's what it is, then if you all can just give some assurance that I don't spend seventeen years waiting, I, I'd appreciate it.
And again, to be fair, Commissioner Powers does not have the authority to prevent the commission from considering any one proposal, at all, period. I can assure you of that. She does not have that authority, it belongs to the commission as a whole. So, and, and we have staff here who can, who can work with you on that, and I, again, I encourage your neighbor who's also concerned to visit with the staff that's here to move forward with the process, but, but she does not have that authority, nor is it our desire to see you wait for seventeen years or even, even six months for you to, to come back to us with an SPUD. So thank you so much, and we'll, I guess we will, we will have.
She's at 2512. Can I ask a question?
Are you?
I'm with that.
I couldn't even hear what you're saying.
I just go. I'm at the 2512 property, so this.
And your name and address, please?
My name is Phyllis Battle, B-A-T-T-L-E, 2512 West I-44 Service Road. That's the address rather than Northwest 39th Street. That's the, that's our mailing address that the post office uses, so only the city water company uses Northwest 39th. So this, this highway was put in through a neighborhood. All of this commercial property used to be a neighborhood, so at one point, the city allowed the zoning C3 to occur, and there's not much of, more than a fence behind their properties and the dealer, the car dealership and everything in their parking lot. You just look behind and it's, it's residential. So I'm just saying, we, our residential is not, we have deep lot behind us, and then the neighbors behind us have a deep lot, so there's quite a bit of, of ground there between us. But as far as, I understand the C3 issue, but I'm just saying, if, there isn't a lot of room per lot to make a big commercial development there, it's rather narrowed. The other properties were allowed to go all the way back and probably take out some, some neighborhoods. And the property next to us, or where the apartments and commercial, you know, gas station and everything is, that is backing up to residents, you can see in the map. And then next door to us on our west is a two-story office building that's been improved. We all have new neighbors, there's been a big neighborhood change of ownership right along that strip just in the last year or two, and so we're trying to make improvements, because if we don't, this city is deteriorating between Penn, 39th and Penn and 39th and May. It's full of transient and, and people that are not working. We're trying to work and contribute to this city and the development. And I just wanted to encourage you that there is a narrowness of residentials behind a lot of these C3 properties that exist. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Battle. All right, then, we, seeing as there's no one else wishing to be heard on this item, I think we're ready for the commission's discussion. Go ahead, Commissioner Claire.
Well, I was going to say, if we could have a good date to continue this to, I think that's the biggest thing that we want to come out of this.
I don't know, JJ, Sarah?
12/8, December 8.
Okay, that'd be the soonest. Any, any other comments from commissioners? I think, I think we're.
So I'm ready to make a motion. If nobody else has anything they want to say, nobody else wants to be heard, I'm going to move, we continue this item to December the 8th, and hopefully, we will see it at that time in SPD form.
And so the motion before the commission is to continue item nine, PC 10846, into the December 8th meeting in hopes of its resubmission as an SPUD. It's been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please pass, please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes. And I would encourage the applicant, as well as, as neighbors, to visit with staff here who's present, Sarah Curtis, who are here, they can help you with whatever the next steps are to be able to move forward. And I can assure you, again, that if we've deferred it to the December 8th meeting, we can rehear it on December 8th. So there's, there's no delay as far as that's concerned. All right, we're ready for item 10.
Item 10, CE 1086, application by Vestina Group to, to close a 15-foot utility easement at a 625 Northeast 122nd Street.
Thank you. Is there an applicant present?
Good afternoon, Mark Grubbs, 1800 South Sarah Road, on behalf of the applicant. This is, this site's in the process of being developed by a large tilt-up concrete building will be placed over this easement. There are no utilities in the existing plat of easement. First step is to close it, so we would, we agree with the TEs and would ask for your approval.
Thank you, and this is in my ward, and I am in support. Are there any questions from commissioners? Is there anyone from the audience wishing to be heard on this item? I cannot move to recommend, to recommend approval, but if I could, I would.
Mr. Chairman, I will move to recommend approval of item CE 1086.
Commissioner Claire has moved to recommend approval of CE 1086, and let's see if we've got a second. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes. We're in line for item 11.
Item 11, it's PUD 1914, application by Dunn &amp; Dunn Holdings, rezone 4900 North I-35 Service Road to the PUD 1914 district.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Caitlin Turner, 522 Cole Court Drive. The application before you is to rezonate a property on Northeast 50th and I-35 Service Road from PUD 313 to a new PUD to allow for a equestrian facility, vet clinic, and some office and commercial uses. The property is currently surrounded by industrial zoned and used properties. There is a residential neighborhood to the south, a few factors to mitigate any concern there. It is over 200 square feet from this tract. Additionally, we did revise the master design statement so that Track 2, which is the westernmost tract and north of the residence, is I-1, so decreasing the intensity there. Lastly, we are able to preserve the trees in the floodway and then leading into the TEs, we also are able to preserve the trees within 50 feet of that floodway. So all of that, all the trees and natural landscape that you see there around the aerial will remain. So that TE we agreed to. The second TE regarding future specific plans that shall show buildings placed in front of parking areas, we are unable to agree to. We are, or we will file a specific plan that we can set out parking location at that time. Due to the nature of the use and the nature of the vehicles that will be coming in and out for the equestrian and vet facilities, we're unable to agree to all of the parking in the rear. The majority of the parking lot is in the middle of the property and screened from 50th. There is a few spaces in that access on 50th and off of I-35, though, that will have to remain. So for that reason, we're unable to agree to that. With that, we, I'd be happy to take any questions, and we request. With that, we, I'd be happy to take any questions and we request your approval.
And thank you, Caitlin. And first of all, let me shamelessly plug and say congratulations on passing the bar exam, because that's amazing. And so we're glad to see some, some new blood representing Williams Box, Fortune Bullard up here. But congratulations to you.
I appreciate it.
On TE2, and this is in Ward 7 in my ward, and so on TE2, can we just agree that we're going to just, that we can amend that to just reserve the commission's right to review the, the parking at specific plan?
Yes.
Rather than dictate how it has to be?
Yes, we can agree to that.
Okay. I think she's already addressed my biggest concern with this. As they already stated, it's pretty much industrial all along, directly along 50th. My primary concern was about protecting the neighborhood just to the south, southwest. And so I think these protections in TE1 are very helpful. Certainly, I'd look to staff if they didn't feel like that was appropriate as well, but are there any questions from commissioners at this time for the applicant? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to be heard on item 11? Seeing none, I think we're just ready for the amended, just changing that TE language.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll move to recommend to City Council approval of P U D 1914, subject to TE1, and amending TE2 to read that the commission reserves the right to review future specific plans.
With regard to parking?
With regards to parking.
And so the motion before the body is to recommend approval of P U D 1914 with the amended TE as read into the record. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available. I think it's it. And the motion passes. And we're now in line for item 12.
Item 12, P U D 1916, application by O.K. Lone Oak Land LLC to rezone 3916 Northwest 164th Street to the P U D 1916 District.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Colcord Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This is a P U D that would remove an unusually large setback that exists under P U D 706. We are seeking to allow a multifamily project that's already permitted under the underlying P U D. We do not seek to alter any density regulations that exist within that P U D, but the way that that, my father did this in 1999 and based on his technical skills as it relates to computers, I think he added a zero after 50. The PUD, as it's written, would require.
That is speculative, too?
No.
I mean, you don't know that.
I come with knowledge. If you've ever seen my father type, I think you would agree. The reason I say that is, it was a 500-foot setback. I have never seen a 500-foot setback in any PUD I've ever been a part of. And so what we seek to do is to remove that. We met with staff multiple times trying to find a way to avoid the public hearing process and the money it costs to do so, but we weren't able to do it. Now, with that said, we are going to be able to offer a 100-foot setback, which is still greater than I think any setback you might expect to see. This project was actually well underway, under construction. All the dirt's already moved, ready to go. It was at the middle of the building permit that it got tripped. So again, we are not seeking to change what's already allowed on site other than a setback that we believe to be more appropriate with the area. So there is one TE and we agree to it.
Thank you. This is Ward 8. Commissioner Noble, would you like to begin our discussion on this item?
Mr. Chair, is there anyone here that's signed up to speak?
I don't think so, no.
With that, I would recommend to rezone 3916 Northwest 164th Street from P U D 706 District to P U D 1916 P U D District.
Well, before, just before, let's be 100% certain that there's no question from commissioners or anyone from the audience wishing to be heard on this item. Seeing none, the motion before the body is to recommend approval of P U D 1916 with the technical evaluations as written. Let's see if there's a second.
So just to keep us from getting stuck here, let's do that. There you go. Maybe Commissioner Noble.
That's all right.
Machine is not working.
It is not.
Don't that work?
There we go. I think we, so it's been seconded by Commissioner Henkel and, and again, this, this, it already includes the amendment to the setback, so we don't need an additional TE for that. Please cast your votes when available. I voted, I vote yea and I did press the button though.
Mine is frozen, so, and I vote yea.
And shows that I did not, but there we go. Thank you. Yea.
Just for what it's worth, I can't believe you would accuse your father of typing.
I also am going to second that from Commissioner Powers. I hope that Dennis Box is watching.
I assure you he's not. But I assure you, I will tell him.
Okay.
Does he know you have house shoes on?
And tell him that we defended him.
What's that?
Does he know you have house shoes on?
They're, they're not, they're not house shoes.
Okay, we're in line for item 13.
Item 13, SPUD 1447, application by R7 Capital Funding to rezone 1900 Northwest 10th Street to the SPUD 1447 District.
Once again, David Box, 522 Colcord Drive. This is an application that would allow the, what was the Whittier School Building to remain and be repurposed into a multifamily project. If you are familiar with this stretch of 10th Street, the city many years ago spent significant dollars to boulevard the street, landscape the middle of Tinsery, in hopes that there would be redevelopment. It hasn't really happened like they had hoped, but this type of project, we're hopeful that will allow that to happen. So the school will remain and be repurposed into multifamily. We do allow for the option of a, an additional building to be built there. If you look at the aerial, Jared, you might go in the aerial, it's, I don't know how long it's been vacant, but based upon the, the nature of the concrete that exists there, I think it's been some time. I, I struggled to remember when it was active. So we think this is exactly what the conference of plan is, is hoping to accomplish. So we're here, excited to get this project rolling. There is one TE that we do agree to, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This is in Ward 6. Commissioner Govine, would you like to begin our discussion on this item?
Sure. I've reviewed the application. I think it's a good development for the neighborhood personally. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item?
Anyone wishing to be heard on item 13? Any commissioners with any questions?
I was going to point out it, the fact that it is on the National Register of Historic Places is a good thing and the redevelopment would have certain conditions attached to that in converting those to apartments, but that's just what we, we need in this area, in my opinion. So I would be prepared to move to recommend approval unless there's any other questions or comments from other commissioners as well.
Does not appear, again, any, anyone wishing to be heard on this item? Item 13. Then the motion before the body is by Commissioner Govine is to recommend approval of S P U D 1447. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available. Thank you. We're now in line for item 14.
14, SPUD 1453, application by N W P F L L C to rezone 5101 North Pennsylvania to the SPUD 1350, 1453 District.
Once again, David Box, 522 Colcord Drive. This is a part of the Oak Project. I think you've probably seen some aspect of this around 17 times at this point. This is probably one of the more unique items you've seen. This particular tract you saw, I think it was two weeks ago or maybe a month ago. This is right-of-way, or former right-of-way in North West Highway that we are seeking to close and ultimately vacate. Based upon the nature in which, my understanding is the initial acquisition of this, the underlying tract occurred, rather than this tract being able to match the adjacent zoning, we have to come in and rezone it because of an agreement that was in place. And so the S P U D matches the development regulations of P U D 1715. We looked at it many ways to try to avoid having to file yet another SPUD, but portions of two of those pad sites and ultimately buildings do fall within that sliver. So we had to rezone it and we matched the regulations contained within that tract of P U D 1715. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but there are no TEs and it's just another step in the right direction. This project, if you've driven by it, is moving very quickly now in terms of infrastructure. And our hope is that it'll start to move quickly with vertical elements next.
That's great, and we.
There's actually two other items on this project on the docket. They're not together, so you'll see me again on this project shortly.
And I, I do feel like we voted on this project in some way, shape, or form 100 times. So I can't wait until it's built, so I don't have to vote on it anymore. But this is in Ward 2. Commissioner Powers?
And I, and I do think that this is really just a almost clerical or administrative kind of approval. So unless there's somebody here who wants to speak on this item.
Anyone wishing to be heard on S P U D 1453, item 14? Any commissioners with any comments?
Or unless, yeah, then I'm ready to move.
No, this is, I mean, I think we've seen this since this application started, that little corner piece that was.
Say it again?
We knew about it when this, when this came through the first time, so yeah, we knew it was coming, yeah.
So I'm ready to move approval, item number 14, S P U D 1453.
Commissioner Powers moves to recommend approval of S P U D 1453 to City Council. It has been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes when available.
Thank you.
The motion passes. We're now in line for item 15.
Item 15, SPUD 1455, application by Midwest City-Dell City Public Schools to rezone 5301 Dimple Drive to the SPUD 1455 District.
Mr. Chair, members of the Planted Commission, John Pettis, here on behalf of the applicant. Our address is 1006 Northeast 17th Street, here on behalf of Mid-Dell School District and Community Health Centers of Oklahoma. Recently, Mid-Dell had to make a tough decision and that tough decision was to close Highland Park Elementary School. Mid-Dell looked all over for the right partner for this neighborhood and they chose Community Health Centers of Oklahoma. Community Health Centers of Oklahoma was formed in 1973 by five African-American women who wanted to bring quality health care to eastern part of Oklahoma County. Now, Community Health has seven locations in the state and, and the Highland Park location would be the eighth location for Community Health Centers of Oklahoma. Community Health Centers of Oklahoma plans to have, of course, family medicine as well as behavioral health and also dental pharmacy and the list goes on and on. On last week, we had the great honor and privilege of meeting with residents and no one protested this redevelopment of Highland Park Elementary Schools. As a matter of fact, the community is welcoming this development. This development so happens to be a 11-acre development. The square footage of Highland Park is approximately a little bit over 70,000 feet. Again, 70,000 feet. We have been working close with the neighborhood and Community Health, again, plans on turning this now vacant school into something that the community and city can be proud of.
Thank you. Commissioner Privet, this is your ward.
Yeah, first off, Mr. Pettis, I apologize for not being able to make the meeting last Thursday. I found out a little bit too late and got out a board of adjustment that shortly before that, but if I had many concerns, I would have contacted you. I do think this is a good development. I have some small concerns, maybe just traffic-wise off of Sunny Lane into the neighborhood, but I don't think it's going to be any greater than people dropping off kids at school and picking up, so I'm okay with it.
And I'll add that I think it's excellent to repurpose all of these schools that have been closed. It's a blight on the community when they're, when they're not being utilized, so this is an excellent use and lord knows, we, we need as much healthcare support in this great city and state as we can get, so. Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on S P U D 1455, item 15? Seeing none, I think we're ready for a motion.
Okay, I will move to recommend approval of S P U D 1455 to City Council.
The motion before the body is to recommend approval of S P U D 1455 to City Council.
There's no TEs.
It has been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes. Good luck.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Planted Commissioner. I do have to agree with your comment about David Box's shoes. Dennis Box would never, never approve of those shoes. Thank you.
We're now in line for item 16.
Okay, item 16, PC 10840, application by TJS Lawless LLC to rezone 215 Southeast 38th Street from R2 to R4.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Commission. I'm Chris Griswold, attorney for the applicant, TJS Lawless LLC. Thanks for having me here today. We're simply going to request a rezoning of this property from R2 medium density to R4 general residential. It seemed to comply with the R4 code and requirements and I'm not aware of any controversy or complaints thus far from the public.
Well, this is, this is Ward 4, so I'll, I'll let Commissioner Privet begin.
Yeah, I didn't have, I thought there was one thing on here, I'm trying to find it. What was, what's the plan to put on there? Is it to, to raise all three structures and put up a new one?
No, we're actually taking the existing structure.
Okay.
It's a five-door structure, just because it has that many units that are inside of it that are dwellings.
Gotcha, okay.
My, my question would be, and it'd stop me if I'm, if I'm cutting in front of you, Commissioner Privet, is what, what limitations, mitigation, if any, occurs when you have that R4 next to the R2? Obviously, it is the applicant's intent to keep the buildings, but it certainly wouldn't be required if we were to approve this as is.
And be knocked down and.
Yeah, it could be knocked down and put an apartment complex in there. So is there any, that, anything that automatically happens to protect the R2?
Not as it exists. If it were redeveloped, those mitigation measures would, would come into play.
Would kick in.
Okay. So only, and, but what are those, just for the sake of?
About the same as what I said before, it's just a screening and a landscape buffer.
Gotcha.
Adjacent to residential.
And it's not really a concern for, you know, obviously on the west side, so.
It's, it's pretty close to that corner.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. If we don't have anybody signed up to speak, I'm prepared to make a move.
Let's, let's make certain. Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on, on item 16, PC 10840? Seeing none, is there any questions from commissioners? I think we're ready. Commissioner Privet?
I'll move to approve PC 10840.
The motion before the body is to recommend approval of PC 10840 to City Council.
Is that City Council or is that just us?
Straight up, yeah, it's still recommend. You want to push the button?
Aye.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available. Thank you. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
It is approved. We are now in line for item 17.
17 is CE 7488, it's final plat of Oak Edition located south of Northwest Expressway and west of Pennsylvania.
Good afternoon, once again, David Box, 522 Colcord Drive. This is the second of three items we're going to hear today on this. This is the final plat. Because of the number of lots, we are eligible for the minor subdivision that can go straight to a final plat. It is worth noting, this project, many elements of it have already been submitted and are in permit review, so we're kind of well underway, which brings me to the TEs. We agree with 1 and 3 and we can't agree to TE2. No comment had ever been made on this in terms of our submitted building permits. And we're not required to plat, so of course, if we didn't plat, we wouldn't have to provide it. But more fundamentally, I want to kind of refamiliarize everyone with what we're doing here. So as you're aware, 50th Street as of now come, or did, went straight through to an awkward spot that wasn't signalized. So what we've done is rerouted 50th Street to where that signalization already exists. The, the nature of this project is one of an urban-type design. So one of the goals of this project is to be able to make this a pedestrian-friendly experience on both sides of New 50th Street. You'll see multiple areas of crosswalks here. So site triangles are common in a suburban market where traffic is perhaps moving faster. Downtown Oklaho- Downtown Oklahoma City, good example, urban environment, you really don't have site triangles. Here, the pace of traffic is going to be slow. We firmly believe site triangles aren't needed, but however, we do have buildings that are proposed to be up to the right-of-way in an urban style, and so we cannot agree to site triangles at 50th Street here or 50th Street and Oak. We do have a site triangle, I guess the space available for the site triangle here at Northwest Highway, which I think would be the only place you'd really be concerned about the visual impairment of a driver, so I think we need to strike T E 2, but we for sure cannot agree to it at 50th, and is this Barnes, Terry? Barnes, and 50th and Oak. And again, it is a bit unusual in that if we weren't plating, which we're not required to plat, this wouldn't have triggered. It's a sub-rag, my understanding, so it wouldn't have even triggered if we just went and built everything. But it gets into the building, and it's a big problem for our development plan. It is, like I said, permit submitted, it's well underway.
Can we, Commissioner Powers, if you're okay with it, can we hear from staff's response on the T E, eliminating T E 2?
We ask for site triangles anytime that we see a plat that would require them. So in some cases, they may be necessary, in other cases, they're not. I think the one at Northwest Expressway is more important than the other two down on Oak Street.
And we can give that one.
Cool.
In fact, it's already given. The commission approved specific plan, if you recall, for the hotel tract and the multifamily tract, and those plans are well underway, and we do have the space there.
Okay.
So maybe what we'd do is revise T E 2 to provide the right-of-way site triangles at Northwest Highway and Oak Street.
Okay. Commissioner Powers, this is your ward. Would you like to begin our discussion?
First of all, I just have to ask, this is the second time I've asked this question, but I was not aware that site triangles are not a thing downtown. Is that a statement that you can agree with, J.J.?
The ordinance, as I recall, the downtown ordinance allows the Public Works Director to waive the site triangles in the DTD zoning district, so yes.
Because if you walk out this building.
Wait just a second. Those are two different things. You're saying the Public Works Director can waive them, you're not saying they don't exist.
Correct.
My point.
Well, there, you'd be hard-pressed to find a site triangle in an urban environment. When you leave here, the city building across the street, the other building across the street, the Montgomery, the Credit Union, Rex Travis's old office, the building right there, I mean, going up and down Walker, you won't see site triangles.
But there, but that doesn't mean that there is not clearance for traffic visibility. You know, saying that there are no site triangles gives the idea that you can't see where you're going downtown for the buildings, and that's just not accurate.
Well, sure, but same here. We have public streets designed to public standards. We have setbacks that met all the requirements at the time of the P U D, so we.
Yeah, I'm not arguing with you about that. Whether or not there are site triangles downtown, there definitely are reasons why site triangles, in this case, have been tailored to the uses and the design.
Sure.
Of this site, which has gone on, as we all know, for years and years and years, so I don't have a problem with that.
Any other questions for the applicant? We do have someone signed up to speak. All right, well, is Nancy Height here? And please give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to address the commission.
My name is Nancy Height, and my address is 13116 Rock Canyon Road, and I'm a little nervous. Okay, good afternoon, commission members, and thanks for letting me tell you my concerns. I purchased the property at 49th and Youngs as a single mother around 23 years ago. My property is at the corner of Northwest 49th and Youngs and backs up to what is now known as the Oak, or will be known as the Oak. The traffic, I have several concerns. The first one is the traffic that will be generated by the Oak. My second one, the requir, I understood from an article that was in the paper on February 28th about the Oak, it said that there were going to be 322 apartments, units, in this, in the Oak. The parking, the request to add, so what I received from you all was that they wanted to do 450 apartment units, and so there, I'm saying the request to add 128 apartments to the complex is simply going to cause more traffic, more congestion. This is a congested area anyway, as all of you know. In the beginning, parking was an issue with 322 apartments, so it's going to be intolerable, really. Number four, 50th Street will curve, what he's just talking about. Young Street is straight, and most drivers will take Youngs rather than 50th, which is, I back up to the Oak on Youngs. After looking at a drawing, which I looked at this morning, it looks as if 50th is a driving hazard, what you all were talking about, where if people are going to be going to work and they're driving, they're going to go on down 50th Street, it's going to be, it's going to be hard to tell where the street ends, and the pedestrians are supposed to be standing or walking or talking. In my mind, if they have a signal, if they have some, something that shows people driving the cars, that you need to be careful. They're requesting six office commercial buildings, when work from home is only growing rather than getting busier, do we really need more office space? The traffic that has been generated at the construction site on Youngs is huge right now. I'm right next to it. The street is not built for high traffic, and it's already looking bad. Traffic signs are not being obeyed by cars, as well as the large construction trucks that are barreling through each day. And yesterday, between 1:30 and 2:30, there were 10 large, I'm not going to call them 18-wheelers, but there were 10 large trucks carrying stuff in one hour, so you can imagine how much traffic is going down that street. Can they not use another street, would be my question. Again, the tra, plus the trucks, but it's not just the trucks. No one stops at the stop sign on the corner of 49th and Youngs. They may go a little slower, but no one stops, or very few people stop, which is going to get even more of a problem. So I, you know, maybe the traffic control needs to study something there, because it's an issue, as, you know, standing in the yard seeing all this, it's an issue. I ask the commission members to consider the property owners, who have lived here for many years, enjoyed the community without having constant traffic problems. This is a residential community of working-class people who have worked hard to buy their homes and pay for it, and we're losing our rights. One of the gentlemen who spoke at a previous council meeting that I was at made a really good analogy, and he said, "This project is like trying to put five gallons of paint in a one-gallon bucket. They have so much stuff going in here. It's going to be beautiful," but it is over, it's too much. You must consider and protect the hard-working residents of the homes in this area, and I ask you to vote no, because enough is enough. They, you know, we need to limit some of the people and spaces that they're all taking. It is, in looking at the plat, they're on top of each other, and we don't need any more. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Height. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard on item 17, C 7488? With that, would the applicant like to make a few words before we hear from the commission?
Briefly, if you'll recall, when we came through with the P U D, we actually did a traffic study. Part of the traffic study was to, you know, ensure that the way that we thought about it was correct, that we were actually going to fix traffic, we think, by putting 50th to that intersection. We're actually going to open up a new avenue to get to Northwest Highway, so our traffic study reflected no adverse impacts with full build-out. So in terms of the density, that obviously is not before the commission, that was approved in the PUD and then reaffirmed in the specific plan. In terms of the comments about office buildings, so I'm not sure. All I can tell you is that of the projects that you have seen via specific plan, you've seen no office uses. You've seen a hotel, and you've seen a multifamily project. The next few that you're going to see are going to all be commercial or retail slash uses, so I'm not aware of a large slot of offices going in here. It's going to be a mixed use. Again, the goal of this entire project is to bring people to it and make it a pedestrian-friendly environment with retail, living, restaurants, those things.
There's a parking garage, too, isn't there?
Yeah, I mean, the apartment complex has a parking garage, yeah. So if you recall, it's kind of wrapped around the center of the apartment project.
Lot 1, block 3, isn't it?
Lot 4, block 1. The multifamily is in that kind of far northwest.
Okay, and then the parking on the south side of that?
Mm-hmm, and then the hotel's going to be kind of the eastern, so lot 5, block 1. And then you'll see pad sites for lot 1, lot 2, and lot 3 that front Northwest Highway.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think to sort of generally make, I want to make this statement. I'm very sorry, Ms. Height. I'm certain that it's frustrating to live next to this massive construction project that's going on. I, and so I, and I know it's not going to end anytime quickly, and so for that, I am very sorry. The, as you may have heard us discuss in a previous item related to this project, we have voted on this a number of times and had a very robust discussion about the compatibility of this project with the neighborhood. We have, we have done as much as, I mean, we've had this discussion, again, numerous times and made numerous changes around trying to improve the traffic flow so that it's easier to get to Northwest Expressway, so that it's easier to be able to get out of the neighborhood without that traffic backing up. Numerous studies have been done, staff has weighed in, we have, I think, exhausted our resources to figure out how we can mitigate any detrimental effects that will happen once the project is completed, but of course, it is not a guarantee. So I just, all I can say to that is, unfortunately, what's not before the commission is, are the issues that you brought, which are the density, the intensity is not what's up for debate today with regard to this plat. But I am assured, based on the review that we've had from the professional staff around traffic, around how we can make the flow of this project work, that when it's completed, it will lead to minimal disruptions for you. And so, again, I apologize that it's not perfect now, and I certainly know that while the construction's going on, it is creating problems for the neighbors who are in that property, and I just, I apologize. Commissioners?
I would just like to say, even if you're never fine living next door to any kind of construction, large-scale construction is just worse. I mean, it's just, you know, incrementally worse. There are issues with traffic on Youngs. There have been issues with traffic on Youngs for years. Part of it relates to the way the neighborhoods on the east and west of that street were developed. You can look at your packet drawings, and you can see that the streets don't line up. So even at places where there are stop signs, you're not quite sure where you're supposed to be stopping and who's going to stop on the other sides. It's complicated. And I, personal opinion, I'm guessing that once Oak is completely developed, there will have to be some further review. Youngs is a straight street. People do use it even now, all the time, and it is a street that kind of invites you to sort of ignore the stop signs and so on. But the way that will, that the development of this use on the corner there, Oak, is going to affect that, I think is going to only be able to be told once it's in place and once it's done. That may be a little bit uncomfortable, but, you know, our traffic commissioner for Ward 2, Rob Littlefield, tells me, at frequency, it's very difficult to try to predict the impact of traffic. You have to wait for it to manifest itself, basically, and deal with it as it is. You can't sort of guess about how it's going to work. And, you know, I imagine that there will have to be that kind of review once Oak is completely developed and up and running, and I think it's probably true that the developer of this site, who has been really, really proactive about dealing with every issue related to its development, will be proactive about that, too, will be more than happy to participate and do their fair share, so. That's not going to make poor Ms. Height's life any easier for the next few years, unfortunately, but.
Until, yeah, until it's finished. But I would encourage Ms. Height, if you have not already been in contact with Councilman Cooper, with all of the, as all of these developments are continuing to happen, as all of these issues are happening, just making sure that you have that direct line of communication to see what can be done to mitigate it. Again, I think your primary issues are things that have been resolved, are issues that have been resolved through the rezoning and the specific plan approval that has already occurred, but nonetheless, they're very serious things that need to continue to be monitored. Any other, oh, go ahead.
I would also encourage you to contact your traffic commissioner and speak to him about this issue. He's always ready to talk to citizens.
That's true. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? And I think we're ready for motion.
I wanted to add one. Oh, please, let's let him say.
Okay, go ahead, sir. You have five minutes. Please give us your name and address for the record.
My name's Trent Height, Nancy's husband. We're together for better or worse. I had not actually seen the plan for 50th Street. I've lived here all my life, and 50th has always been a problem. Everybody here knows that.
Yes.
And this is a beautiful plan. There's going to be lots going on, lots of people, and there's going to be a lot of traffic, and it, just to look at that, can you show that again, and what's, what's the plan for 50th Street? Because it looked to me like it comes down and makes a 90-degree turn, and other 90-degree turn.
It'll be straight now.
Man, that's no way to move traffic. I mean, I'm a country boy, I guess, but, but lots and lots of people, lots and lots of cars, and if I was trying to go somewhere, you know, we're always in a hurry, and I've got a choice of going down 50th Street, and I know that there's going to be a 90-degree turn up there, followed with another 90-degree turn, hey, I'm going to go into the neighborhood and get off 50th. It looks to me like there's a better way, that it could be curved over and get a straight shot going through there. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Height.
Can I, can I say, Mr. Height, you know, when we first drafted the plan for the traffic flow through this development, it had, it had a really nice kind of meandering curve, and I thought that was great, and I thought it would be, you know, it would look better, it would work better, and so on, but I was convinced by traffic experts. You know, you call in the engineers, and they tell you how things really work. The idea behind the right turns was really to slow traffic down, to make sure that it is moving slowly enough to allow for the pedestrian participation in the project. And if cars are zooming. And if, if cars are zooming down through there, like you do when you're in a hurry and other people do when they're in a hurry, that's not a pedestrian-friendly environment. So that's why that was actually changed. Originally, it was a nice kind of little meandering curve, but it was done this way to be sure that it's pedestrian-safe.
I understand that. But Fiftieth Street is a major street, and, yeah, it's, there's a safety, safety issue there, but people are people, and when they know that they're going to have to slow down to make that, they'll just avoid it.
Hopefully, you know, that'll only happen once per person, and then they'll choose to use Northwest Expressway and Penn rather than to come down through this way. I'm not 100% convinced that that will solve any problems on Young's, but I do think that will have to be reviewed once the development is in place and there's an ability to actually judge how the traffic is flowing with the development in place.
I appreciate that. I've heard that an expert is a squirt that is gone.
I think we're ready for a motion, Commissioner Powers.
I'm going to move for approval of the final plat, item number seventeen C seven-four-eight-eight.
Commissioner Powers' approval of C seventy-four eighty-eight?
With the amendment to TE two, to limit it to the site triangle at Northwest Expressway and Oak.
Limited to, yes.
Commissioner Powers has recommended approval of C seventy-four eighty-eight with the amendment to TE two as read into the record. It's been seconded by...
I don't think it matters, but it's not a recommendation. It is a plat.
Okay. Commissioner Powers has moved approval, C seventy-four eighty-eight. It's been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes when available.
Thank you.
And the motion passes. We are now ready for item eighteen.
Item eighteen, PC ten eight forty-four, application by Ricardo Sanchez to rezone forty-six seventeen East Avenue from R one to R two.
Good afternoon. My name is Ricardo Sanchez, address three-two-four Southwest Ninety-Ninth Street, Oklahoma City, seven-three-one-three-nine. Yeah, we bought this vacant lot a couple of months ago, and we were looking at the zoning and noticed that there's R two zoning in the back, and that's why we submitted the rezoning application, to see if we could build a new construction duplex.
Thank you. Commissioner Privet?
Yeah, this is another one that's pretty good infill. It's been a vacant lot for as long as I can remember. I'm on board. Do you have any protest or anything for, I haven't.
I'm certainly less concerned, given the nearby, the immediate adjacent R two, so...
Yeah.
Yeah. Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on PC one oh eight forty-four, item eighteen? Any commissioners wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I think we're ready.
Okay, I'll move approval of PC one oh eight four-four.
Commissioner Privet has moved to recommend approval of PC one oh eight four-four to City Council. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available. And Commissioner Freyli is absent. And the motion passes. We're ready for item nineteen.
Nineteen is PUD nineteen oh five, application by Consul Properties and Thousand Oaks Farms to rezone seventy-one oh one South Indian Mirren Avenue to PUD nineteen oh five.
Thank you.
Steve Landies, nine oh three East Thirty-Fifth Street, Shawnee, Oklahoma. Mr. Pennington, earlier you'd said that you thought you'd seen one of these before. Well, let me promise you, you have seen this one before.
Okay, yeah.
Several months ago, we actually went through this project, and actually, it was approved by you all, but at the same time, we had a couple of protesters or people that were questioning the, the project in the first place. Directly following this, we actually, I stepped out in the hallway with these people. We actually resolved some of the concerns and questions they had, and really felt that the best thing we could do was to actually make some slight modifications to the proposal or to the PUD to actually address their concerns. Of course, worked with several people on this board, and I know that is 100% y'all's goal to try to get us to do, is to try to work in cohesion with the surrounding community, so we did so. Based off of that, we made the adjustments as required. While it had already been, you know, approved or blessed by you all, I had found out that we actually had to come back to the changes, which were really very minor, and re-present it to you at this time. So I think I just hope that you all will follow your previous recommendation. We can prove this again, or I'm probably going to be in trouble. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I do appreciate you meeting with them and agreeing to adjust some things, because you could have just went and did whatever you wanted, so that's very helpful. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I don't, nothing's changed on this. What, what, what has changed on this, I guess?
The only concerns on one portion of this project, on the very frontage, we did talk about some residential.
Right.
Their concerns were that on the residential portions, that they might be tract housing or kind of a migrant farm, workers-type housing, and it was verified that that would not be the case. We limited the number of driveways that could actually come on, because that was the other concern, was the condition of the road. And we also established that the minimum value, basically, houses had to be at least 2,400 square foot, 350 to 400,000 dollars or higher valued houses, which should actually be something that should increase the property values in that area instead of being a negative asset to those property owners. They all believe that that would definitely help things out, so they all felt very happy. Even today, there was a person that questioned it. I stepped out in the hallway with them once they understood what we were doing. They said, "Thank you, we're happy with that." So they're no longer, I don't, don't believe here to question or protest.
Well, certainly wish we could do that on every project.
Right, yeah.
I don't think we're that lucky.
Yeah, if we don't have anybody signed up to speak, I'm, I'm...
Is there, is there anyone?
More willing than the previous time.
Anyone wishing to be heard on PUD nineteen oh five? Any commissioners wishing to be heard on this item? I think we're ready, Commissioner Privet.
Okay. And no TEs. Move approval of PUD nineteen oh five.
The motion before the body is to...
Recommend approval.
Recommend approval of PUD nineteen oh five to City Council. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available. He stepped out. And the motion passes. We're now in line for item twenty.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Item twenty, CE ten eighty-seven, application by Oak Land Development to close a seventeen-foot street in utility easement at Fiftieth and Young's Boulevard.
Once again, David Box, five twenty-two Call Core Drive, the third and final item related to the Oak. This is a cleanup of a portion of utility easement that exists. All the utility plans have been submitted to the City of Oklahoma City. There's nothing in this. Again, this is just a cleanup. I'd like to say you won't see us again, but undoubtedly, on a project this size, there's going to be little things that occur. So with that, there is a TE. We agree with it. We've actually already submitted a survey to the city showing there's no utilities within there.
Cool. Commissioner Powers?
Again, this is a, this is a kind of a simple cleanup kind of thing. I don't have an issue with it. I don't, unless there's somebody here who wants to be heard on this item.
Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on item twenty, CE one zero eight seven? Are there any commissioners wishing to be heard on this item? I think we're ready, Commissioner Powers.
I'll move approval, item twenty, CE one zero eight seven.
Commissioner Powers moves to recommend approval of CE one oh eight seven to City Council. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes when available.
Thank you.
It is approved. Thank you. Now in line for item twenty-one.
Twenty-one, C seventy-four eighty-seven's preliminary plat or reserve at Mustang Creek, located south of Southwest Fifteenth Street and east of John C. Patrick Turnpike.
Good evening, Commissioners. Chris Anderson with SMC Consulting Engineers, eight fifteen, Oklahoma. This is a preliminary plat. There's a canyon to zoning that came before you, probably a couple of months ago. This is an area that was kind of left over from the construction of the turnpike that went through there. This preliminary plat conforms to the zoning that was done. So there are TEs, and we agree to all of those. The second TE has to do with the length of cul-de-sac. The code calls for 700 feet. I think we're at 780 feet. So with that, we just request approval of the plat. We have to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is in Ward Three. Commissioner Freyli, would you like to begin our discussion?
This is a, a difficult area to develop, how it's a long track, and it's difficult to get to, so I think you guys have made good use of this track of land.
Thank you. Any, any other questions from commissioners before we hear from a member of the audience? Seeing none, I would like to invite John, and I so apologize that I cannot read that last name's Slivia, and again, I apologize if I, if I did not get this right. Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on, on this item, Mr. John?
Oh, is this different? Thirty-one or is it twenty-one? I thought it was on this item.
Okay. Item twenty-one, sorry. Okay, is there anyone wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing, right, apparently I am. Okay. Go ahead, I think we'd have to vote on the variance first.
The variance first. I move approval on variance to table five point one in section five point three point two A for item C seven-four eight-seven.
The motion before the body is to, is to approve the variance to section five point three point two point A of the subdivision regulations.
How much was that variance? Wasn't it eighty feet?
Eighty feet.
Yeah, okay.
Oh.
You're all right.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes when available. And then we're ready for the motion on the plat.
I move approval on C seven-four eight-seven preliminary plat of the reserve at Mustang Creek.
Commissioner Freyli has moved approval of C seventy-four eighty-seven. Let's see if there's a second. Subject to all of the TEs as, as listed in our staff report. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're now in line for item twenty-two.
Item twenty-two is C seventy-four eighty-one. It's the final plat of Summit Ridge Villas, located east of Broadway Extension and north of Hefner Road.
Mark Grubbs, eighteen hundred South Sarah Road, on behalf of the applicant. This is the final plat that was majority in conformance with the preliminary plat. Just one misunderstanding on one of the TEs on the preliminary plat, but after looking back at that, we agreed to those TEs. I agree to the TEs in this and would ask for your approval.
So you are in agreement?
Yes.
With TE two?
Yes.
Okay. This is in my ward, and I am in support, considering that you are in agreement with all the TEs as well, because that's what we discussed in the pre-meeting. So I cannot make the motion to approve, but is there anyone wishing to be heard on C seventy-four eighty-one? Any questions or comments from commissioners? Think we're ready.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of item C seventy-four eighty-one, final plat of Summit Ridge Villas.
Commissioner Claire moves approval of C seventy-four eighty-one. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes when available. Okay, we're now in line for item, that is approved. We're now in line for item twenty-three.
Twenty-three, C seventy-four seventy-two, preliminary plat of the Enclave at Blackwood Farms, located south of Sixty-third Street and west of Council Road, and a variance to table five point one, section five three two A of the subdivision regulations.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, David Box, five twenty-two Call Core Drive. The commission may recall, this came before you two previous times, but the first time it came before you, there was a good amount of protest that was here concerning the plat. So this particular tract of land is fairly unique in that what we are proposing is in large part what was always proposed, and this plat has to be new because the original preliminary plat expired. So I have two separate plats, and you're probably asking, what is the difference? Because they look remarkably similar. This plat is what was approved in 2004. What we seek now is almost identical to what was approved in 2004. The street network that the planning commission considered in 2004 is identical to what it is now. Now, with that said, what my client did after the last time it was continued was to go back and try to redraw this and try to find a way to help satisfy some of the concerns. So if you see the red lines on this, he has gone in and made these 70-foot lots. In so doing, we have lost 22 lots overall from what the plat that was proposed originally. So we've reduced the lot count in an effort to try to satisfy some of the concerns. In terms of access and traffic, it's worth noting, we don't need any variances to traffic issues. We don't need any variances to access issues. If you look at your staff comments, you will see under Traffic Management an asterisk. That asterisk means, if you look earlier in the staff report, that they responded with no adverse comments. So if you look at the way that access flows from this development, you have two access points onto Sixty-third. Now, it's worth noting, one of those is a divided boulevard entry, and as this commission knows, that actually counts as two access points. So technically, pursuant to the way that the code looks at this, we have three access points on Northwest Sixty-third. In addition, the neighborhood to our north is a public street, and it's intended to be able to funnel traffic out through a collector to get to a signalized intersection at that point. So the question I think that we must ask ourselves is, we have, we have a piece of property that's zoned R one, we have an existing portion of the development that has two stub streets going to the south. Both of these streets right here were built, and the planning commission, of course, required that those streets be stubbed to serve the next phase of development. Well, that's where we are now, and so we have a plat that conforms to the subdivision regulations, but for one piece, and we'll talk about that in a minute, conforms to the R one regulations. The previous one did two, but even so doing, we went back and revised the lot sizes to make them 70-footers. The code allows 50-footers. We made them 70-footers, so we're not maxing out the density like many developers come in here seeking to do. We also provide two stub streets to the south. So the only variance that exists, that the way I read the staff report, I think staff supports it, is we have a cul-de-sac length issue based upon the nature of that existing pond. So this kind of reverse C pond does not allow us to have any other cross streets here. In 2004, it was approved in the exact manner as we're showing it here. So what we're seeking is almost identical to what you saw in 2004. Not sure if Ms. Powers was on the planning commission back then. I know the rest of you weren't, but it, it's remarkably similar. There was a neighborhood meeting. My understanding is there is at least one representative here. Our understanding is, based upon the changes, there's at least general support of those changes and, and what it means. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions that exist. In terms of the TEs, we agree with all of them. We do need the variance on TE three, again, just to match what was approved in 2004, but my client tried everything he could, knowing that it zoned R one, a previous plat was already approved on this. I'm not sure what else you could expect a developer to do, other than meet the access and subdivision regulations as it relates to traffic management and access requirements. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Brad Reed is a civil engineer also here, as well as my client, Mr. Tony Meek.
Can I, can I ask just one question before I pass it over to Commissioner Claire? Just for clarity, the lots adjacent to the existing homes are 70 feet? Is that what you're, they're 70 instead of 50, correct?
Correct. The red line reflects the, the change in the lots, so that those are 70-footers in terms of width now and not 50s.
And so comparing the previous plat, I lied, I guess I have two questions. The previous plat is how many lots? Your proposal, your new plat, is how many lots? Can we compare that directly?
It was 405 originally, this is 428. Twenty-three additional lots. And if you think about what most developers are coming before you with in R one applications, they aren't 70-footers, right? I mean, you're seeing PUDs, and if it's an R one case, they're all going to be 50s. You're seeing lots of R one ZL, which of course are 40s, and so a 70-foot lot is one of the wider lots you'd see in a new application for a plat under R one. And so a 70-foot lot is one of the wider lots you'd see in a new application for a plat under R1.
Thank you. Commissioner Claire?
Well, I know, so I heard this first go around, I think on September 22nd. And then I was absent for the last meeting, unfortunately. But I know when we first saw this, the issue was with the access and the amount of traffic that is going to be coming off of 63rd and the two entrances that are there on the north of the existing development. Other than a reduction of lots, I don't really see a big difference there. I do appreciate the effort that's gone in to make some concessions. But the fact that all the access is taken off of 23rd Street through those two entrances that are only within a few hundred feet of each other, I still take major issue with. I don't like it. I'd be interested in hearing what the neighbors, you know, how they perceive these changes, if there's still concerns, and other commissioners as well.
And I think in addition to that, just, I'd also love to hear, why can't? And I'm certain there's, just looking at the map, and there was, there's been some discussion with staff that I had certainly trying to answer questions, but what about access to council? Could you speak to the feasibility of that?
Yeah, well, it's not feasible. It's a city-owned canal. And so to try to construct a bridge over that canal and enough time to slope it back down to hit council is problematic. To the west, it's a private street, so we can't access that. But again, if we assume that the subdivision regulations are passed in a manner and reviewed by engineers, the goal of subregs is to ensure safety through access. We seek no variance to access regulations. We meet the engineering requirements as it relates to access. And so if we assume the subregs are proper in their form and how they regulate access, well then what more can a developer do but meet those engineering requirements? And I know it says two, but it's a divided boulevard entry. You see developers come through all the time where you grant a variance because they provide a stub that will be a future connection, right? We're not even asking for that. We meet all access requirements as they exist today. My client sat down with Traffic Management, their comment was, they see no impact whatsoever? Because again, the goal is not just here, but this is a signalized intersection and this part is built as a collector, is my belief. And so there's no, from a traffic management standpoint, adverse impacts. I think that the thing that is hard to get around is, of course, it's really no different than what was approved in 2004. And if there was nobody here, if there were no neighbors, and we had an R1 application with 70-foot lots that had no variances, it's hard to see whether there'd be any problem.
Well, I mean, we heard earlier today, mistakes happened 20 years ago.
Well, but again, I don't think we assume that the subregs are a mistake in how they address access. If so, this commission would change the subregs. So there are three access points to the north, we stubbed two to the south.
My issue is that there really needs to be an access on the council. What I'm hearing is, we just don't want to spend the money to cross this channel. That's how I perceive it, and I don't know if that's, you know, if anyone else feels the same, but I really, I really feel that there needs to be an access to council.
Well, respectfully, I'd say there's no engineering to point to that. I mean, that's a subjective desire. The engineering regs, your traffic management division will respond with comments related to access. Frankly, most of the time, I'm arguing against Mr. Chai or Mr. McCubbin. But here, there's no engineering that would tell us that this lot count requires that other access point.
So we're taking all, what, 428 homes now? 428 homes all go to, have to go down that first street, that lone street within one block in this neighborhood? To get in and out. Was it 62nd? They all have to be on 62nd to get out of this neighborhood?
No, there's two paths.
But both paths come off 62nd Street?
Both go to 63rd Terrace. There's two streets that go straight to the north. Both of these streets go straight to 63rd Terrace, then you have the boulevard entry and the regular.
Okay, so 63rd Terrace, so they all have to be on, so at some point, every person in this development has to get on 63rd Terrace to get out to one of those two entrances.
Yes, sir.
So that's what I'm saying, there's 428 homes, probably 800 and some cars that have to basically be choked down to 63rd Terrace.
Well, there's multiple access points to get there. One, of course, could come up here and go straight to here and not even choke down here. But again, it's no different than the plat that was approved in 2004.
I get that, but that's why, I think that's why everyone is on this commission, is we want to make improvements, you know, from the past, so.
That's true. Why don't we, for the sake of, because I think we can, we could go a while back and forth about this traffic issue. Why don't we hear from our neighbors? And then continue our discussion from the commission, unless there are any questions from commissioners before we begin. Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Powers.
I'm very sympathetic to Commissioner Claire's concerns about this. And, you know, it's always a difficult balance for me as a commissioner between, you know, what would just be less expensive and therefore more lucrative? And where you get to the point of, you know, just infeasibility. Whether there is, you know, a path to construct something across that canal to council that would make sense, whether that's feasible and, you know, ultimately financially, but also engineering-wise. I mean, I just don't have that kind of expertise. I don't know if there's anybody we can call up here who can shed any light on that for us.
I mean, I think that, I'll just say this, that in our pre-meeting, I tried to ask the question as many different ways as I could ask the question of our traffic staff to tell me how we should, give me their expertise and help me understand at least what we should take into consideration as we think about that access point to council. Because that, it makes sense to me, just logically, it makes sense, but again, that's not my.
What Mr. Reed said is that they looked at it, and if you had a broader view of this canal, the only spots that is crossed are arterials. So it's the arterial street network that are crossing this, not local streets serving neighborhoods. It just doesn't, and if you're familiar with the area and driven up council, that checks that box. Like there aren't just random neighborhood streets that cross massive channels like this.
So, I mean, here's the thing, you know, you do have stubs to the south. I wish there were three instead of just two, but we'll set that aside for the moment. This is one of the ways in which our grid patterned street system creates issues for me. If this were a development that had lots of little windy streets and then a couple of larger sort of boulevards or avenues where people would understand, this is where the traffic goes. And you, you know, you buy a little house down here in the middle, way, way down. And, you know, you don't think about the fact that all of that traffic, and not just this traffic, but those stubs to the south, you know, is going to be coming this direction. And that's just a lot of cars. That's all there is to it, you know? Whether there's a, I mean, all due respect, they looked at it, it's not, you know, terribly helpful to me. I have, I always think about the Onqo Eastern at, is it 33rd and Edmond? It sat there forever because there was this giant ditch. And you thought, nobody will ever develop that property. Nobody will ever develop that property. Finally, they did. They, Onqo came in, they built a giant bridge across the giant ditch. And, you know, they take money away from there by the truckload. So it made sense to somebody at some point. The question is whether a residential development of this nature at this location makes sense either to bite the bullet and do the access to council? And whether that's even possible, as Mr. Box alluded to, engineering-wise, in terms of what it would take to get over it and get back down? Or whether it's just a matter of dollars and cents, you know? Even if that's all it is, it still has to be feasible, so it's hard. These are hard questions.
Barry?
Sorry. We are requiring to southern spurs. What happens when the next applicant comes in to build the next phase? At what point does the access on the council have to happen?
Well, eventually you hit 50th. I mean, 50th Street is the next arterial to the south. So just like the neighborhood to our north, eventually you have the grid network that connects all the arterials, which is why we require the stubs. Like the stubs that exist today weren't required, right? It was part of the overall plat that was approved. It wasn't like this singular development right here, and we don't know what's going to happen here. It was one cohesive development that through a quirk in the subregs expired. So this was always the what was intended, just like what was intended up here. A connection with all the arterials.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Commissioner Powers and Commissioner Claire that it's a conundrum, but you're also, do you have, I mean.
Good point.
This is a really tough case.
It is. Do we want to hear from our neighbors? First, Charles Womack. And again, you have, you have five minutes.
I'm Charles Womack. I live at 6217 Brannick Way in the Blackwood Farms. I have been in this area of Oklahoma City for a long time. I lived in the Meadows before I moved into the Blackwood Farms, which is just north of this subdivision. I attended the meeting with others that were here from the community. Terry and Carolyn Crowder took the initiative in our neighborhood to get our homeowners together and to raise our concerns. And we deeply appreciate the discussion. We know this is difficult for this commission to deal with these kind of changes. But during the conversation that we were encouraged to have, Nate Claire, our ward representative, encouraged us to get together with the developer, have some discussions, and those things have happened. And we appreciate Tony Meek for meeting with our representatives and reassuring us of his intentions to address some of our issues. You see the preliminary plat that they're proposing today as addressing many of those things. We do know there are some issues with getting out of the neighborhood. Many of us already head towards Wilshire, which is to the north, by going through Riverbend and some of those areas. If you're there very long, you learn those alternate routes. And so at any given time, you're not going to have all the neighbors trying to get out on council through 63rd and what we would call the curvy street there. So a lot of the things you're concerned about, we take care of when we get into a place and we live at it. And so, but we appreciate you looking at the bigger picture. But I personally believe that what has been established here by the things you discussed in the prior meeting is, is that now we're in a conversation with the developer. He hears our concerns, he shares some of our concerns, and we also have identified some of the issues related to a traffic light and that there's another way of going about that. So we have some things involved. But I want you first of all to know is that we appreciate and express our appreciation to you all and also to the developer that's coming forward and his representatives, and it's addressed some of our issues. We, you know, if you approve this preliminary plat, we intend to continue to have those conversations. We know those are the kinds of things that make for a good neighborhood and eventually a good community. And so bottom line is, I represent several, but for my purposes, I would encourage you to approve this plan and go ahead with the current developer that wants to do that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Womack. Next we have Deek Kuntz, and I apologize if I mispronounced your name. I certainly apologize, I have a very unusual name, and so I like to see that it's pronounced correctly, but it doesn't happen often.
All right, well, believe it or not, I've heard it a million ways and you got it right.
Okay, good.
So my name is Deek Kuntz. I live at 6207 North Stinchcomb Avenue. I live directly across from the property that is being considered here, so I live just to the west. So anyway, so as he mentioned, I was a member that met with Mr. Crowder from Blackwood Farms Edition, with Mr. Reed and Mr. Meek to talk through all the, some of the concerns we brought up at the original meeting. We certainly appreciate the revisions they made to the plat. They basically added some more 70-foot lots in there, actually added some curves to the streets to prevent so many long straight shots that were running straight down Green Meadow and Blackwood Boulevard originally. So they made those changes as well. So we certainly appreciate those, dropped the count from 361 to 339, as he mentioned. So we certainly appreciate that. Another thing Mr. Meek committed to that was, we thought was very important as we talk about how it impacts the area and especially that neighborhood as well, is he committed to a minimum square footage size and of what to put in the neighborhood of 1800 for the main group, 2000 for the lake lots, which is important to the neighborhood as well. As far as those concerns that we had before, Mr. Meek was very helpful in trying to do everything he could. And Mr. Crowder, who did a lot of this work for the Blackwood Farms group, he actually had a fall last week, which is why he's not here. He's going to be all right, but he could not join us today. So appreciate both of them. They both independently made a lot of calls, tried to reach the city in a lot of different ways to discuss these two main things, which is, of course, 63rd access, potential light there at 63rd and council. And so they both did that independently, tried to go as far as they could go. Our understanding is that the 63rd light had never been actually formally requested by anybody in the public. So that, let's just say that has now been submitted, a request for consideration of a light there. So that would start the long process that has all those types of requests to go through. So we appreciate that starting. And the other request that we really were thinking about or requesting at the last meeting was, was there any possibility of access from the south? Whether it was a construction entrance initially or even a permanent road up there? And the real access that comes up from the south right now is Canal Road 5. It is directly to the west of that canal, runs all the way from 50th to 63rd. So it is certainly there. It's not really a road right now, it's just, it's just land. But the city obviously uses it and can gate it off and lock it today. But, so we asked that, and so those questions went up to the traffic, when the traffic engineer, I think it was the Waterway, I'm looking for my notes here, but it's the Waterway Group or whatever that's over that group, over that, those decisions. And Mr. Meek and Mr. Crowder were both told, no, you can't use that because that's city property and it's liability issues. So we were just told no on those accounts. So that's where we kind of ran into both of them. We think there's obviously longer-term possibilities of improvements on 63rd with a light there. We would obviously like to think there was some more discussion to be had on the construction entrance or a permanent entrance using that Canal Road. So we would appreciate any recommendations or ideas for you guys and anybody else to talk to with that question. But with that being said, even though we know we don't have any permanent solutions to those two problems, where we basically end up with my group that I've talked to on the Stinchcomb Group, and I've met a lot with the people from the Blackwood Farms area as well, is, you know, we're pretty convinced that this land's going to be developed at some point, right? I mean, it is there, it's very similar to the original plat that they were expecting when they originally bought here. And so our feelings are, if it's going to be developed, that we'd like it to be developed as close as it can to what is drawn now and not have something come in later that somebody wants to change the R1 or they want to just go down to 50-foot lots and put 500 in here or do anything else really worse, in our opinion. So that's our reasoning on why we think that this is a reasonable result. Think Mr. Meek's been very good to work with and to listen to and understands what we're working towards. And so we think it is a recommendation we can support. Again, we don't think, we'd love to have a better solution for there if we could imagine. If we could magically build a, something over that canal, that'd be great. But I've walked next to it, it's significant. So, again, I'd love to have an easier answer for some of those more permanent challenges, but we think compared to what we have to work with right now, this is the best solution with the revised plat that Mr. Reed submitted today after the one that we originally discussed back in September. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kuntz. Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on this item, C 7472? Okay. Do you want to make any comments before we turn it over to the...
Briefly. I failed to, I think, properly identify this. In terms of the access to council, you'll notice on the map, there's a street between council and us. So, it's a road. It's a city-owned and utilized road. So, money can solve everything, but the city would want to have to give us permission, and I don't know how you'd have to bridge over that to get the clearance to cross that Canal Road. So, as both neighbors that have come before you, compared to, if you recall four weeks ago, how many people were here? It's a reasonable application that has neighborhood support that meets every single requirement that you have in terms of access.
Any other questions for the applicant before we begin our discussion?
Don't suppose you can go under the canal?
Under the canal?
Creative solutions, finally. There we go. No answer?
No, we cannot go under the canal.
All Oak Tree and they go under Kelly with the golf cart.
I was saying, that's for golf cart access, not vehicular.
Well, thank you, David. I think commissioners, I mean, from my perspective, I appreciate the neighborhood's willingness to come to the table and negotiate. I definitely thank the applicant for their willingness to make changes. As Commissioner Noble can attest, I tried my best to ask as many different ways as I could of our traffic staff and staff in general in the planning department, what can be done? How should we look at this to try to address the traffic issues? And I, it sounds like we're in the same uncomfortable place that we're in all the time when we're dealing with Ward 1 and Ward 3 issues. Infrastructure follows development, not the other way around. And I'm not satisfied by that answer, but it is what it is. And so, the fact that the applicant and the neighborhood are satisfied with these changes, maybe not happy, but at least satisfied for the moment with the way things are, I feel pretty good about it in supporting it. I am deeply concerned that if this applicant owns the property to the south, I'm going to push hard. So, they're on notice, whoever that person is, property owner. If there's not access to 50th, I will vote no. I'm telling you that right now. It is too many people, too many homes trying to reach 63rd Street and go beyond. So, I think we have to have another major arterial street access in order for us to move forward with any further development here. But I am making that statement without any expertise in engineering or traffic. So, that's, you know, do with that what you will. But I think I am in support. But any comments from commissioners?
Well, I just want to add that I appreciate Mr. Womack, Mr. Kuntz's comments, and I'm very happy to hear that the owner worked with them, had discussions. It seems to me that while this is not, you know, as you mentioned, an ideal situation, everybody agrees that it's kind of the best that we're going to get at this moment in time. So...
Well, there's no further comments. I think we're ready. Commissioner Claire?
All right. So, I will, I'll move approval of item C 7472, preliminary plat.
So, we do have the variance on TE 3.
Thank you, thank you. I'll move approval of the variance to table 5.1, section 5.1, excuse me, 5.3.2. A of subdivision regulations.
Commissioner Claire moves to approve the variance to section 5.3.2. A of the subdivision regulations. It has been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available. And that motion has been passed. Commissioner Claire?
And then I'll go ahead and move approval of the preliminary plat, C 7472.
Commissioner Claire has moved approval of C 7472. It has been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes. Thank you. We're now ready for item 25.
25, C 7489, preliminary plat of Quail North, located south of Northwest 150th Street and east of North May Avenue, and a variance to section 452E5 of the subdivision regulations.
My apologies, I'm handing out some documents.
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicants, who are also here, as well as Mark Grubbs, who is the civil engineer for this project. I'm handing out two things. I'm handing out PUD 1577, which is thick. Mr. Privet was groaning, just carrying it. And then, I'm handing you out three separate plats, all of which we're going to discuss. The reason that we're going to discuss those is the nature of the recommendation contained within the staff report. I am not sure I've ever seen anything like this. So, let's start with the basic facts of what we have here. This is a duplex development. It is 52 duplex lots. Ms. Powers will undoubtedly recall this, what I think is the final PUD that was approved on this tract of land north of Quail Springs Mall. It went through multiple different PUDs before we finally arrived at a PUD that was something that could actually be developed under the current market conditions. And so, we're not here to talk about a use. Duplex is absolutely allowed. In fact, if you're familiar with the area, duplex perhaps will be the least dense development that occurs there. There are multiple multifamily projects that exist there. The reason I want to have the PUD is specifically on page 10. So, this is a duplex development that will be served by private drives. And the reason I want to discuss it is if you turn to page 10 of PUD 1577, specifically under 9.7 vehicular access regulations, if you go to 9.7.2, and I'll read from it, lots within this PUD will not be required to have frontage on an approved street. Access to individual lots within this PUD may be permitted from a private drive. The private drive shall be placed within a common area or easement designed for access purposes. Property Owners Association, through the use of recorded covenants and restrictions, shall govern maintenance of any private drive. So, what we have is a duplex development served by private drives exactly as contemplated in the PUD 1577 back on July the 7th, 2015. The next thing I handed out was a series of plats, and this was just quick research in the last several hours this morning. The reason why I think this is important is, staff seems to be taking issue with the number of lots served from a private drive. Now, the subregs are perhaps flawed. Perhaps they need to be revised. But limited number is not defined under the subregs. So, what is limited is perhaps subjective. So, let's see what the planning commission has thought not to be limited here in the last just two years. So, the first page is from the final plat of Chisholm Point, 78 lots, so more lots than we provide. That was 2021. The final plat of Summit Ridge Villas, this is in 2020, 114 lots, more than double what we're proposing here. And finally, Summit Ridge Villas, that this commission just approved April of this year with 98 lots, again, almost double what we provide for here. So, staff seems to make an opinion that this is problematic. However, this has been the way that is consistently done time and time again in front of this commission for many, many years. And so, if staff wants to direct that a new policy take place, that's fine. The subregs should be changed. But developers acquire property based upon what zoning and subregs allow. They create a pro forma based upon yield, based upon what the infrastructure costs are going to be. And so, when my client buys the property and knows he can get the number of lots he proposes and knows what the infrastructure costs are going to be, to hear a week before his hearing on a plat that checks all those boxes, that the staff is of the opinion that it's not okay, that's a big problem. There needs to be certainty in the process. And it's hard to say that there is certainty when time and time again, other developments with private drives have been approved time and time again. In fact, you'll recall the variance that we seek is the same variance we seek often, and that is allowing each unit to be individually accessed. So, we've had this discussion multiple times. In fact, staff, in their recommendation under the third option, seems to agree with us that from an emergency services standpoint and postal delivery, the variance makes sense if we're going to agree that we can develop with private drives as prescribed in the PUD approved in July of 2015. So, if we're playing let's make a deal, we choose door C, which is consistent with every vote I've seen in front of this commission for several years. I'd be happy to answer any questions. We agree with all the TEs and do want the variance on TE 2 under C.
If Commissioner Noble would indulge me, I think it'd be appropriate for us to hear from staff and their perspective before we move forward, if that's all right with the commission as well? Jared?
I don't know if this is...okay. Jared Martin, Planning Department, subdivision zoning. So, he is correct that this is something that's allowed in this PUD. This is something we've also seen in several fairly recent developments. It is a discussion that we've had, though, at the podium and also behind the scenes with those same developments, as to how many lots is too many. The main concern we have is if this were developed as a single lot, multiple-unit development with private drives, it wouldn't be as big of a concern because you'd have one owner responsible for the maintenance of those private drives. In a case like this, you're splitting it up into multiple lots. You have a narrower-than-normal street section, maybe not built to the same standard as a street section. It's not inspected the same way, doesn't go through the same process. And so, now you've got multiple moderate-income homes on these private drives that they then are responsible for maintaining going forward. So, this is a thing that could become problematic in the future if they're unable to maintain that street that looks like a street but is a drive. And then, they come to the city and want it to be taken over by the city. It doesn't have the same amount of right-of-way width requirement. And like I said, it's not built to the same standard. So, therefore, the city would, it'd be difficult for the city to take that over and do anything with it. Additional right-of-way that might be needed at the time would then eat into those lots and probably make them all be out of conformance with the requirements that they had when they were zoned. So, we've been looking at this for a long time, and this is something that we're just going to start bringing up at these types of hearings.
Do you want to know about that?
May I? So, in terms of the standard by which these had to be constructed, I think most PUDs you'd see would just allow it to be from a private access drive. This actually specified the lot width for one-way dri...excuse me, the pavement width for one-way drives, the pavement width for two-way drives. The time to challenge that would have been at the zoning phase. And I, I mean, I don't, with all due respect to Mr. Martin, I don't know that the income level of the residents has any bearing on whether or not this is an appropriate use of the street network. It was decided in the PUD. And I certainly, you know, these things happen, right? It's kind of similar to the discussion about sprinkling. If you want to require sprinkling, go make it a rule. Developers want some element of certainty so that they know when they buy something or they seek to develop something, they know what things are going to cost, right? Because we're not talking about density, we're not talking about use. We're talking about things that are black and white, written down, both in the PUD and the subregs. And we meet all those boxes. So, the way to address it is to define the word, limited. But the three that I just showed you, of course, are all greater than what we seek here. And two of the three, one is doubled, more than doubled the amount of lots that we seek, and one is just about right at doubled the amount of lots that we seek.
Commissioner Noble?
Thanks. This is difficult. One question I had, the stub out on the south, it goes to nowhere? Is that planned?
It goes to the 100...oh, it's a dead end.
It's just for access. It just seems a lot of homes, one access.
Mark Grubbs, 1800 South Sayer Road. The access to the south is just a street stub. It does not tie in. It's planned for this to be gated and that to be, that double entrance to serve the neighborhood, still meets the access requirements of the subdivision regulations.
So, the same for the one just to the north of the main drive?
Yeah, that's raw land to the north. The street to the south is, there is a street to the south, the Watermark Boulevard. Raw land is to the north.
I think, I'd like to hear from the other commissioners on what their thoughts are. I mean...
Well, I'm curious. Is there going to be a perimeter wall or fence or something along Watermark Boulevard?
Around...
Along water, like a perimeter wall fence?
Why is there, why can't it connect? Is that the heart of your question, Commissioner Claire?
Well, I, no, well, so what's going on is, these are private streets. They want everybody to come through one access on Coturnix Drive? So, I mean, I can see why the stub there on the south, it's, and it's hard to see. I can't, I can't make it out, but there's a lot there. So, that street there is to provide access to that very last lot, but it's not an access point off of Watermark Boulevard. I'm trying to determine, is there going to be a perimeter wall?
It's gated.
It's gated?
It's gated, yes.
Okay, crash gate?
No.
Oh, okay.
No crash gate there.
Okay.
It'll be landscaped, and it's a gated community. That's why we've got the private...
All right. But I guess to the north, I'm a little bit, you've got common area there, a detention pond, but you're doing the same thing, but your lot's going to take access off of Bob White. So, is that just in anticipation of future expansion?
So, we do the same thing on the north, where it doesn't connect.
Yeah.
That means the turnaround requirements for, in the fire thing.
Can you show the aerial? So, to the north, it's already platted. So, to the north, it's already platted.
No connection.
Which is why we do that to the north. And again, it's gated, so we want to control our access.
Like, that little section there just doesn't seem like you have to have it. The street that's in front of the common area.
Oh, what he's saying is, do we need that street? This, for fire turnarounds, that's why it's there?
We, yeah. You're right. That could, I think that could go away because they can circle around.
You're talking about...
That little, that little piece, yeah.
You're talking about the north stub, where we show the detention.
We can look at that on a final plat.
Yeah.
I don't disagree with that. That could go away because they can make the corner instead of that turnaround. Yeah.
Questions from commissioners? Any questions from commissioners? Go ahead, Commissioner Frehley.
I have a question. At what point, I don't have a lot of experience, in the city taking over a private street? When does that happen?
They don't.
They don't.
When their HOA fails and they can no longer pay to maintain the roads and they just deteriorate beyond, you know?
Yep.
And at that point, it's really bad. And their argument is that if they're not wide enough to meet city standards, if they ever had to take them over, then, you know, they would already be, there'd be no parking allowed on the sides of the street.
I'd say chances are very good that the city will end up taking over all of the private streets within its boundaries sooner or later.
But these aren't, these aren't streets.
Just like they will.
These are driveways. And so, the city would never take this over.
I know that's true, but I'd be curious to know whether we have. I mean, there, my mother happens to live on a street that's really a driveway. And, you know, it's very problematic. At the time that she bought the condo she owns, there were five units there. There's a long driveway, there's a cul-de-sac. Now, there are more. So, if they had to do an assessment to cover the cost, maybe they could. But, you know, how many people have $5,000 lying around that they could contribute to that process? And there's a legal mechanism by which they don't really have a choice. You know, it is done, and then it becomes a lien and, you know, all that sort of thing. But private streets are just a big problem. That's all there is to it, from the city's standpoint. People love them. They like to live in gated communities. They feel safer and all that kind of stuff. kind of stuff, and I get all of that. But it's just, it's not that dissimilar to the drainage ways that HOAs own. You know, HOAs think the city owns them, they think there's a tree out there, they need to come get it, and, you know, they make that phone call and find out, and it's like, no, that tree's on you, you know? It's like, it's a problem.
I, I think, I think that part, and I do want to hear from Dustin certainly, but I think that for me, this warrants further study. I mean, and it is, I take very seriously, as I have before, as much as, and to David's point about the sprinkler system, which we've talked about, I know there's a lot of new commissioners, but we have had this discussion. I have strong opinions that I feel like we should have it, but I agree that we have not put the development community on notice that that is a requirement because the city has not required it. And if we are allowing all of these people, including approvals we've made today, to do this very thing, I just, I can't bring myself to vote against this at this point.
I absolutely agree. We've got, yes.
But I think we should have a discussion. I think, I think we should change the subregs, and I think we should have a, we should have a study session about it, and I think we should vote and do it.
And part of that process, I mean, not to be unfair, the development community has very different views about private streets and their marketability and the issues with respect to people living in, you know, an environment they feel safe in and so on. And, I mean, it's very easy, from where I'm sitting right here, say, private streets are just a bad idea, and we shouldn't be doing this, you know? But it's really a fairly complicated question, and it does deserve discussion. I mean, we are where we are, we have the rules we have, you know?
But let's be intentional, you know? Let's decide instead of just...
I agree.
...being in this position to let David bring us all kinds of, you know, precedent.
And I, I mean, on the one hand, I applaud staff for inserting their comment to get the discussion started.
Yes.
But on the other hand, I have to say, you know, it's not reasonable to expect that, you know, on a one-off basis, here and there, we're going to decide one way, one time, in one time, a different way another time. There does need to be some kind of predictability.
Go ahead, Dustin, sorry.
No, no problem. Dustin, Cigarette Utilities Department. I just wanted to let the commission know that one thing that we've been seeing issues with some of these smaller streets and everything is solid waste, access with our trash trucks. Now, this being a private drive is different than being a private street. A private street is constructed differently than a private drive, as Commissioner Noble pointed out. So I do not have a problem if this was a private street because the integrity of the street with the trash trucks, school buses, things like that, that goes down these private roads, or if this was a private drive, it would definitely, over time, have deteriorated, and then the city would have, you know, since it is a drive, wouldn't take it over. So that's something to consider as well, is, I'm not opposed of it being private, but I'd rather see it as a private street because of the construction integrity of a street versus a drive. Just wanted to let you be aware of that as well.
What's the feasibility of that for the applicant?
No.
Between the difference between asphalt and concrete?
Because it's been designed in a manner that you see before you. It's been designed in a manner that allows the yield that we need, that is designed in a manner consistent with every other application I just showed you. So I appreciate staff's concerns, but that sounds more like a discussion point for a study session, not a one-off discussion on this plat. Why we didn't talk about it in April, on the other one that we approved, I don't know. We cannot make choices sporadically on applications. There's got to be, on a plat, right? Zoning is really subjective, right? It's compatibility, it's all these things. Plating through subregs, I frankly was surprised to see that, because if you read subregs, it usually has, like, definitiveness, right? This width, this setback, things like that. So an undefined word in a subreg doesn't do anything. It's not a regulation.
Any other comments from commissioners?
Just going off of what Dustin just said, as far as trash collection, is there going to be, you know, is this like a central location-type deal, and they?
No, each will have their own.
So the trash trucks are going to be going around the little private drives?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. I do see that kind of as a problem.
Well, I think someone asked the question, could staff point to these other developments that have shown us there's a problem? I have not seen the answer to that question. Again, that'd be a wonderful discussion point at that study session. I would love to join for that.
Barry's getting up, so.
Great.
Barry Lodge.
Barry Lodge, Public Works. I would tend to agree with David in that all the discussion, this discussion is probably for a study session that we can work to change. However, I will disagree that, on the, on the issue of how often these issues occur, I hear, I hear them every day on pub, on private streets, that we get the calls for, oh, we've got a problem out here, whether it's flooding, whether it's potholes, whether it's the street deteriorating, requesting the city to come out and make repairs to that street. I get the pleasure of telling them, sorry, that's a private street and it is all on you. So, well, I think we're at, probably at a point on this one where we can't change horses in the middle of the stream on it, but there needs to be notification of some kind, and again, this is probably going to be in a study session again, where it is clearly delineated without any, any question where the responsibility for the maintenance lies, because in this situation, it's not only going to be the street, or the driveway in this case, but it's also going to be the underlying storm sewer and any of the other infrastructure that will be installed as part of this. And so, actually, I don't know we're at a spot to do anything different with it, but it is an issue that needs to be addressed and before these come up again, because they're going to happen more and more often with some of the changes that have been made to the review process in public works.
Yep. Thank you.
And I misspoke, my client texted me, there will be centralized dumpsters, not individual cans, so perhaps that further eases the concern raised.
It does. That's helpful. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to be heard on this item? C-7489. And I think, Commissioner Noble, where are we? What do you think?
As difficult as it is, I mean, it meets the regulations that we have. It's kind of like the other cases that we've seen, approved one at the last meeting, thought the exact same thing. I think my recommendation would be C, behind door C.
And you're choosing the choose-your-own-adventure?
Is that your final answer?
Correct.
Would you like to phone a friend?
Which was approving the application with the private drives and all of the technical evaluations. First, we have to do the variance.
So Commissioner Noble's moved to approve the variance to section 5.4.2.1.5 of the subdivision regulations. And if you press it?
I hit mine.
Oh, it's not changing on mine. There we go. Oh, or Commissioner Hinkle moved. Well, we can, we can switch it. We can switch it. Commissioner Hinkle seconds it. Commissioner Noble made the motion, and then we will cast our votes when available. Okay, yeah.
And I'm going to vote aye. It's stuck.
Yeah, I don't have a voting pain either. I vote aye as well.
Commissioner Privet votes aye. Commissioner Noble votes aye.
I also think about...
And Commissioner Powers also votes aye. The motion passes. Commissioner Noble. Oh, yeah.
And so I'd like to recommend...
Yeah, we're just, we can approve this.
Okay, approving.
Commissioner Noble moves approval of C-7489.
Yes.
It's been seconded by, let's see. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Should we ask staff to move it in the direction of a study section?
Yes.
On this item?
Yes.
So we can...
And I intended to do that when we got to the end of the meeting. I don't know if there's a formal action we need to take as a commission to ensure that that happens, but I would like to see us move forward as quickly as we can. But I mean, we would need a recommendation, you know, for how we would want to address all of these issues, but I'd certainly want to, I think, you know, the private drive versus private street versus private drive issue, I didn't even realize until it was just pointed out just now, the distinction, but I think we should address that as well. I'd also love to know, of these, of these projects that David specifically pointed to, I want to know what, what the results are. Has the city taken over any of these things? How are, what's the, have these streets deteriorated? I think it's important...
How far back this goes?
Yeah.
You know, how?
We need some history.
How many of them are holding up and how well?
And so...
So we often see that they will be constructed to city standards as one of the conditions on the private streets or drives, possibly?
Yeah, because I'm not understanding why would it ever, ever allow a private drive? Why is that, I mean, other than it just saves the applicant money?
It has to do with the easement that's granted.
Ah.
So they don't want to grant as much easement, they do it at a driveway.
Gotcha.
Bigger lot.
Okay.
In a smaller area. It's all about density.
But also the easement doesn't change the lot size, it just changes the area that you can build a structure on that lot.
It just, it wasn't always required, even that private streets be built to city standards. That's something I think that's happened since I came on planning mission. I seem to remember that, so, you know, it was, at one time, it was just like, well, we can just build our own street, and that's great. And you guys can pay for keeping it up, you know?
Well, certainly we'll work with staff on figuring out how we move forward with this.
See what happens when you come up and talk to us about things? Now you're in charge of something.
I know this issue caused my brother to sell his house, because, before getting assessed, about 20 grand to fix the roads that were supposed to be taken care of at the beginning, so, yeah, I can understand.
Yikes. All right, I think we're ready for item 27.
27 is S.P.U.D. 1440, application by Court of Vows, L.C. We deferred number 26.
26, okay, I was right.
1228 Southwest 149th Street.
Thank you.
Ross Morris, Morris Engineering, representing the applicant, Mr. Vanover, who is here. We were here four, five weeks ago, and work continued. We had a meeting with some of the neighbors and went over our, our project and heard some of their concerns, and we were, you know, amenable to some of them, and some of them, you know, we were able to work out, but some weren't. So we're back now to see about if it's going to be able to get approved or not. We're putting in a gym, workout facility on this site. They're off 149th Street, just west of Western, about a, well, half mile west of Western. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
This is, this is Ward 5. Commissioner Hinkle?
I'm interested to hear from the neighbors.
I would like to note that one of the things that came out of it, about one, we had some rendering made from Mark and David, what issues it would, the machinery structure, etc. We also slid the, on our little plan, we slid the building forward, put the parking all in the back, so none of it's going to be on the street, or, you know, it would be in the back and not set out in front. For better modifications, try to make it more aesthetic for everybody.
Do we have any questions from commissioners?
Well, your use of the word "might possibly" look like is a little...
Well, I mean, it's a rendering, though, once you actually have an architect design it, sometime things change a little this way or that, but that's what we're intending.
So has there been, has there been text reflected then in the S.P.U.D. to reflect the specific modifications that you're showing in your rendering? Pretty pictures?
Has the S.P.U.D. been?
It looked like it was all metal. Was it a metal facade building?
No, 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 it was going to be...
Well, I know, that's what I was going to say. I mean, you'd have to come to the variance. You got 30% in the clouds in this one.
As our former chairman, Commissioner...
Ephes.
Kramer's used to tell us, pretty pictures are all well and good, but, you know...
But what's in the text?
The question is whether, you know, what it says in black and white about what the exterior will look like and so on. Have those modifications been committed to the text, is what I'm asking?
If they're pleasurable, we would be happy to have those in the, in the S.P.U.D. I felt like it was something we could, you know, if it was a, if that was something that y'all desired, we'd be happy to see it in the motion and include it.
When I visited with staff about this application, they expressed some concern that you might have trouble being able to build on this site because of the floodplain. Has that been an issue that you have addressed with the plans you have so far?
Once we get past this and get to where we're actually looking at the development of the project as far as, as the nuts and bolts of it, we're going to have to do a drainage study through there to see about, I mean, the solid line that we call the floodway, that's a line that we can't encroach on at any point. The floodplain, of course, engulfs quite a bit of the site, and we're going to have to see about moving that. But we've got to do a flood study to do that. That's just a requirement, and we're going to have to, and it's, and it's a requirement of FEMA. I mean, the flood study itself will actually go to Oklahoma City and be, be approved there, and then once that's done, it goes to FEMA, and once they approve, and that's a long process, by the way, like, over a year, I wouldn't anticipate, but once it goes through FEMA and gets approved, then we know we can do something with the site.
Has, is specific plan required for this S.P.U.D.?
A what?
A specific plan? Is it required? No? Maybe that's something we should consider as we're, you know, thinking about our box of tools here to ensure that we are satisfied with the layout of the lot, so I'm just planting that seed now. Any other questions for the applicant before we hear from our neighbors?
So what I'm seeing on the screen and what I have in our packet is a different site plan than what I'm seeing here on your board.
Right. We agreed to move our, I guess it goes back to this one, doesn't it?
We agreed to move our building forward. That's all we gave him, to move it forward. We're okay with that, and this was, I made the change on the master development, just slide the building forward, bring the parking ground behind it, and that was something, one of the things that came out of the meeting.
Yeah, I remember we discussed mitigating measures for parking adjacent to the residential across the street, so I think that's a good move. I just want to make sure that that's captured in here, that there's an actual way that that gets enforced as it moves forward, if it does move forward.
Okay, I think we're, unless commissioners have anything else, I think we're ready to hear from our neighbors first. Janice Knight. And Janice, you have five minutes to address the commission.
My name is Janice Knight. Our address is 1309 Southwest 149th Street. If you go down 149th from Western, on the north side, most of the people have one and a half to five-acre lots. You've got seven houses from Blackwelder to Indiana, and that's all the homes there. On the south side, halfway in between Western and Penn, there's nine homes. All of them have five-acre lots. Vanovers have nine and a half. We're right across the street from the Vanovers, and where they're wanting to put the physical fitness center is just a little bit to the east on the south side. You're in a flood zone, there's a lot of trees, they're going to have to bulldoze those trees down. Are they going to move them? Are they going to just let them lay by the creek? And that's going to cause a lot of drainage problems. You would think... You would think when a person wants to put a physical fitness center in, they would want it in a shopping center or where there is more traffic to draw people into their fitness center. This is a rural, it's not, there's no additions or anything like that. So this is kind of in a wrong spot, the way I see it. They need to be where there's more traffic to go and pull into their facility. They have one in Norman, this is just a bad area. We had a business in the Greenway Shopping Center on Southwest 119th for 15 years. In the evening, when all the shops had closed, you would go out the very next morning, you'd see condoms, you'd see syringes, needles, where the kids had went back there and done their thing. They say that they're going to keep the lights on maybe till 10 o'clock at night when they're all gone. What do you think is going to happen back there? It's going to be the same thing. They say they're going to move the parking lot in the back and the exit will go to the east. It'll be okay when you pull out of 149th and go east toward Western, but when you pull out of 149th and go west, it's going to shine right on the houses from Blackwelder to the middle part. There's not going to be any security there to keep the kids from coming around and doing things. I think this is a bad location and I think, I hope you will not approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Rochelle Ride, and I apologize if I'm pronouncing your name incorrectly.
Hi, my name is Rachel Reedy. My address is 1405 Southwest 149th Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73170. And I do apologize, I do feel like five minutes is rather rushed to be able to tackle all of the major concerns in the staff report alone. And before I get into this, Mr. Morris's engineers comment already about how, oh, was that in, in there? If they would have read their own staff report, it was, it was in there about how the structure actually needs to be taken care of, you know? I, I did that and later on, I'm going to ask these to be incorporated to the minutes of the day. We have several concerns listed in here, I don't have time to go over them right now. But anyways, we were told that they would, we would have a meeting per your guys' request. And actually, that meeting was not helpful at all. You guys had, had mentioned, I think Ms. Powers had mentioned, that they actually put the facility in front of the parking. We haven't even seen it, so we don't even know what it looks like still, so you guys get the first view. They told us that they would send it to us and they haven't. As well as, it was told to us by Mr. Vanover that he would spend the thousands of dollars in order to hire an architect so we could actually see their intentions and it could be listed in the SPUD that they were applying for. After him and Mr. Morris had a conversation, they said they didn't say that. And there were three of us there at the conversation, it took place right out here in the meeting hall last time we met. So none of those things happened. But just to kind of get to the point of it, is that there are multiple site development issues here from a 25-year floodway to a 100-year floodplain. Utility issues with the main sewer running directly underneath the property. A depleted, almost depleted aquifer, as mentioned by your staff report, as well as traffic, which, you know, takes into egress and regress issues, signage, safety issues, medical issues, things like that when you're trying to build a gym. Gyms have very high traffic coming and going. Automatically on 149th Street, between Southwestern and South Pennsylvania Avenue, we can't even get out of our own homes sometimes. There's a two-lane road right now. I understand that people have mentioned that maybe there is in the plans to have a four-lane road put in. Okay, well, let, maybe let's readdress something like this at that time, because until then, I'd like to know, is it actually already on the schedule? And if so, when's it on the schedule to actually have that four-lane road put in? Because right now, I do not believe, according to even your staff report, that this high-traffic arterial street can handle this additional traffic. Not to mention, as my neighbor already said, Janice, this is not, last time, somebody on the committee mentioned that, hey, we need to get used to it, commercial's coming to Southwestern, we get that. If the property was located east of those oil tanks that are on the picture up there, we could care less. It's on the west side, right next to all of our houses. Even on your site report, I mean, on your staff report, it's mentioned multiple times that they don't even know, what is it, as stated, it was unclear at the time of the review if the site could be developed, as indicated, which I believe you mentioned, Mr. Pennington, conceptual plan. There's other things mentioned too, as to that their plans, their intent was not consistent with the comprehensive plan. Big issues, once more, you guys just mentioned the metal, the different types of texture. If they would have read their own staff report, all of these things are asked for them to address in here. And they don't even know, they don't even know. I know, but they don't know. That, that's really nerve-wracking, especially when 50% of the ownership has property touching this property and they don't even take care of it. We mentioned it last time and a Mr. Vanover tried to say they had nothing to do with each other, but at the meeting, we found out they had 50% ownership, two of the brothers, brothers have 25% and 25%. And the one brother doesn't even take care of his property as it, as is. He hadn't touched it till the day after the meeting last time. Afraid that, because I asked you guys to go drive down that street and see what it was like and see where the placement of this proposed project was going to be built. So all of a sudden, what'd they do? Cleaned it up. Interesting. So again, as a, as a city, I don't, I don't know who's going to be responsible for, like, issues. For example, with our property, if the flood zone gets messed up or if they accidentally hit a sewer line, there's oil tanks, again, right adjacent to it. I want to know who's going to pay for this kind of stuff if these issues were to become worse, you know?
The applicant, I can answer that, the applicant's liable.
As well as additional traffic issues, there would have to be lots of signage. We are, you can't tell from here, but we're actually kind of up on a hill where we are and those cars come flying through there and where that is, sometimes it's even hard for us to see. And so if there's a brand-new facility put in there, a lot of people aren't going to be prepared for that and ready for that type of traffic. So you're going to have to have multiple signage preparing people to make that way. As well as last time, I apologize if I say your name wrong, is it Mr. Govin or Govin? Is that, is that correct? Thank you. You mentioned the tree preservation issue. Again, it has not been addressed, we addressed it again in our meeting with them, still not addressed. There's a depleted aquifer, like I mentioned, as well as, I want to make sure I get everything. I feel like I'm missing something, the riparium, is that I'm saying that right? Riparium, which is really important too. When you go just bulldozing down trees, where do you think all these animals are going to go to? Into our backyards. You know, I'm going to have to pay to get more gophers, you know what I'm saying? You don't know how much that costs every year. Or skunks, my dog got sprayed last week two times. So I'm just saying, there's going to be a lot of issues that haven't even been, been addressed that are going to affect us as neighbors, because again, this is not a commercial spot. So we do ask you guys to take into consideration that this area right here, maybe five, 10 years, maybe. But right now, you have to ask all of us, plus the rest of the people that were at the meeting, over 40 of us represented, with our spouses, like 80-plus people at our neighborhood meeting that made it, you'd have to ask all of us to move and none of us are willing to move right now. Do you have any questions from you? I apologize, I didn't have a chance to ask specific questions, but I do have them outlined in here. So lastly, I, Rachel Reedy, along with our neighbors here and the ones that could not make it due to conflicting work schedule, I hereby ask and request these questions, comments, concerns, as well as any other points any of us have addressed today in this meeting verbally be submitted in, and written, incorporated into the responses to the minutes of the City of Oklahoma City Planning Commission.
Thank you, we're happy to take your questions and you are out of time, but I, I do appreciate you coming in and certainly appreciate all of your neighbors coming a very long way to, to be here and wait patiently, so thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize for the errors, I was up all night.
I looked up widening for Southwest 49th. It's slated to be widened from Santa Fe all the way to May.
Do you know the dates?
No, but it's from a 2017 bond issue, so is, is it this year? Yeah.
It's okay, I've gotten, I've gotten in here as to what date it's on the actual docket to, to be had. So who would you like me to hand this to?
Thank you, Ms. Reedy. Is there anyone else wanting, wishing to be heard on this, on this item? Thank you, sir, you have five minutes.
My name is Jimmy Hillis, I live at 1440 Southwest 149th. And that property, let me give you, I know you're ready to go home, I would be, it's kind of hard, but. The property was part of, that property was part of the homeowner association. After the tornado happened, that person that owned that home, I think is related to one of the men that own part of it right now. I don't have all the facts, but what happened, basically, several, because of tornado, several people that were on part of that association, did get out of the association. And when they built the barn, there's a, there's a metal building there now. And that metal building, no one was notified. I mean, I don't, there might have been a couple of people, but I know when, I built back in 95, I had to notify a bunch of people in that area and send out letters. But I'm, what, the fourth lot, lot or five-acre lot west of this, I wasn't notified. They built this metal building there and it's probably, I don't know, I should have measured. It's closer than that building, that, that back wall to the, to the street, if not even closer. And everything else has set it back something like 250 to 300 feet. Part of my concern is, is that when they presented the, the rendering or what do you call it, the structure, the photos or whatever of the building that is there now, they presented one thing and it didn't, they built a metal, it was supposed to be in a metal building with like 60% stone. It's not, it's, and they didn't, I don't know why. If, most of it is sort of known, if it had been, if they wanted to build a barn or a metal building, if they'd built it back, but it's, it is right out front and most people, y'all agree? It's just, it's one of those things, it's a, I'm concerned they're showing this, but concerned with what they'll build, because that's not what they presented originally. I don't have a copy of what they did originally, but it's not what, what they built. So my concern is, or is it going to bring, change the evaluation of the neighborhood? They're building on a street, they're building where the, we're talking about on, in the flood zone. I brought in, on the back of my son's property, we brought in probably well over 100, 120 loads of dirt and just to raise a small area. So my concern is, what are we going to end up with if there's not a little more, if really, we don't have more information? Because what we see right now is going to not be, if it's not, I'm concerned about what it's going to be. I would think you would too, of your, of your home, so that's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard on this item, S.P.U.D. 1440? And we, and I will remind you that we have, we've already heard about the issues regarding removing the trees, the traffic, the floodplain, potential issues with security and crime. Any new issues that you want to address with your five minutes?
Just making aware of situation, Scott Shelton, 1245 Southwest 149th Street. I live directly across from this. The concern is, there's a lot of traffic. We had, used to have post office boxes or post mailboxes across the street. The mail department actually asked us to move them to our side of the street due to people coming off the top of the hill, we discussed coming off the top of the hill, coming down to, to, people run into each other on the bottom of the hill down there. And the other thing, I guess, just credibility, when they first built that house, it was supposed to be this, it wasn't what they built. And they let it really go and here they're doing the same thing with the planning with their house, with this drawing. Metal building, first thing we've seen, a metal building, they should be all brick homes out there, so. Just want to bring some of that up.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard on this item, S.P.U.D. 1440?
I'd just like to make, make a point that the staff report even requires a 70% brick on the veneer, so there's not a metal building option in that.
I think, yeah, it's, but we can make it that clear. Would you, would you, are you agreeing right now that the only, that you're going to do 70% brick?
Yeah, yeah, it's in the report, I mean, that way.
No, no, it specifically says minimum 70% brick veneer, rock, concrete, boards, stucco or, or stone masonry. So are you saying brick?
The rest was 30, I thought, or the Ephes.
And then 30% Ephes.
And/or metal or?
So you're wanting to take out stucco?
I'm asking you what you would like to do.
We can commit to brick or masonry veneer.
So you would like to, so, okay, you heard our, our description of it, what's your?
Say that again.
Where, where are we?
Yeah, where are we?
So you're saying 70% brick?
Brick or masonry veneer, yeah.
Okay.
Is that not what's in a lot of this?
Yeah.
And remove the 30% Ephes.
Yeah, right.
Can do anything, buddy, I mean.
That's fine.
Okay, so we're eliminating Ephes and saying that the only acceptable facade.
The gym and everything is going to be inside, there's not going to be any outside courts. They're all going to be inside, they're going to have basketball, I think a couple of courts in there for basketball and pickleball, I think they're including pickleball and I don't know anything about pickleball, so don't ask me a question, but pickleball tournaments in there, things like that.
I just want to ask a question, why this site?
Yeah.
This is not, this does not make sense as a developable site for a facility like this. They don't generate the kind of returns to pay for the development cost on a floodplain site. But why this site?
Go ahead, Jordan. This is next door to the residence, I believe, isn't it?
Hi, Jordan Vanover, 15205 Stone Meadows Drive, I'm one of the developers. I can answer that question for you, truthfully. If I had the same property options, the farther east, we have option again. It's for sale for about $760,000, bought the land for significantly less than that. So if I had the same options for both lands, to have near the same demographic, $81,000 average per household at 36,000 people on 73170, doing the demographic study, I can pull just as much income from that area, spending way less money. So if I have the same two properties and I'm willing to develop and me and my partner's willing to develop the land to something that makes the city money, willing to develop the land as something that can actually be usable, then why wouldn't I pick that land for less money?
There's a lot of gyms out there and, and they, they tend to be metal buildings. And I know why they tend to be metal buildings, because the returns that they generate and that the cost to put up the building is such, and there's a lot of buildings out there available. I just, I still, I still can't quite get my head around. I know you've got a good study and you've done your, your research, but.
Sure. So, so can I address a few things, just to be honest with you guys, okay? So the, the meeting we had, the reason it didn't go as good as we thought it would go is because they brought a bunch of neighbors into that area and that were behind the area saying that the, the building was going to be planted on my brother's property, which they're very upset about. It's not my property, it's not the business's property, it's not even has anything to do with this land. It's a totally different LLC and company that's building the land. But my brother's personal decision to build a house that upset the neighbors is the reason they're here. It's not because of the building, it's not because of land, that's the reason, okay? That house recently appraised for $780,000 to help increase.
Well, to be, to be fair, they, they came and brought very specific issues about this specific project. So everything that they mentioned today was not about your brother's property, it was about this development in particular. They brought, and I named those issues that they brought about your development that we're talking about right now, today.
Yes, sir. So, so the, the three issues they mainly brought to us were lights. They didn't want lights facing their houses, I understand, I wouldn't want lights facing my houses. That's why we took the entrance further east towards Casey so they wouldn't see as many lights come in. That's why we took the parking and put it behind the building so that we could mitigate lights, traffic, things like that. We also agreed, and we'll put in the SPUD, no forward-facing lights. We're going to put downward-facing, if we do lights like that, we will not do forward-facing lights. We wanted to make the neighbors happy, we wanted to make them, that's why we did go spend money to get an architect and do rendering when we didn't have to technically, but Councilman, I believe, Noble, mentioned it last time, that it would, it'd help if we had rendering. So we went and got renderings to help with that process, to let them know and assure them that this isn't going to be the same type of property that was built. Now, like you guys said, inside the SPUD, we can't go against it. So the, the biggest question at the meeting was, how do we know it's not going to be a metal home? How do we know it's not going to be all metal? Well, the SPUD doesn't allow us to make it all metal. The SPUD, it, it literally can't happen. This isn't some kind of agricultural house that we can build however we want to. It is an actual business that we're going to have to go through the city and go through all the steps and hoops that it requires and we're willing to do that, because we want to make a difference and change the community and we want to help. And I think the reason that there's not as many neighbors they thought were going to be here is because they sent out a pretty false text message to people to get them there. They were saying we were going to build a halfway house with juvenile delinquents in it and outdoor basketball courts with lights out there.
That's not the issue here today. The issue is about, is about how you're going to build this project. That's not the issue here today. The issue is about, is about how you're going to build this project and develop this property. So I, I don't think you're helping your case by further upsetting the very neighbors who you're hoping to be customers in your own gym. Do you have any issues, anything else you'd like to say, state to us before this commission has its discussion about whether or not to approve your, your proposal?
Yes, sir. So the, the concerns I feel like that they brought to us that we can actually fix, I think we went to measures to fix that. We changed the way that we would structure the building to put the park in the back. We changed where the entrance would be, so it would be less traffic in there. And we changed forward-facing lights, that there would be no forward-facing lights or anything that would, that would affect the neighbors in that way. We also put the time we're going to close in the spud, just to make, ensure that there wouldn't be anything too late out there for the neighbors, or it wouldn't be anything that would disturb the neighbors. So as far as their concerns, I feel like we brought their concerns, we tried to fix those the best we possibly could. And any suggestions, of course, from you guys, we're more than willing to, to work with them to make it something that we could build.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Hinkle, and, and if it adds anything, I really feel strongly, we either need to do one of two things. Either require a specific plan, and let's go ahead and narrow down all of the issues that we want to see resolved before this project could finally move forward, or we send them back, we do a continuance, and then really work on this language and tighten it up.
I would like to see that information reflected here, because what I'm trying to understand is, if they did this and made to produce the renderings, why not do that in the time allowed?
The city, so that's reflected in our reports that we're seeing, is true. Commissioner Hinkle?
I had lots of conversations about this. I'm sorry I wasn't able to make the meeting. Being on the planning commission is a volunteer seat, appointed by your councilperson. So all of us are up here at 4:30 on a Thursday afternoon on our own dime. The city, in their staff report, the first one that came out, just has approval of the application at the bottom of it, with no technical evaluations. So, as a planning commission, we have to take what the neighbors think, what the city has to say, what the developers' intentions are, and property owner rights come a big play in there. So, if you didn't want this property to develop, you should've bought it, because you could do whatever you wanted to with it. When you bought it, and you could leave it as a treed area and a, but, so, there's lots of things to weigh out here. One of the people that went to the meeting that I had a conversation with was Aaron Tatum, who's a developer in the south part of the city, and he owns a large part, basically everything to the east of the first house there on the north side of the road. And he told me flat out that the men at this forelanes in the next year, he's going to go to zone all that commercial. So you're going to have strip malls and banks and whatever else goes in a commercial-zoned area. Part of my heartburn about this application was that it was a C1 base that was asking for a gym. And if you go look at the things that are allowed in a C1 base, and if he never builds the gym, and it has a C1 zoning with it, then you're allowed to do all these other things in a C1 zoning. So Mr. Morris and I had a conversation yesterday, and they have agreed to remove these items that could go there. And I'll read them into the record, and we may end up here two weeks from now, but 8,300.5 alcohol beverage retail sales, 8,300.32 convenience sales and personal services, 8,200.2 dwelling units, 8,300.37 eating establishment, no alcohol set down, 8,300.38 eating establishment set down with alcohol, and 8,300.39 eating establishment limited, 8,300.41 food and beverage retail. And then 8160.65 is a hoop house, and I don't know what a hoop house is. Anybody who wants to tell me whether a hoop, what a hoop house is?
It's like a greenhouse, except it's brown.
Well, we, and Mr. Morris, in our conversation yesterday, agreed to take these uses out of this completely, that that would never happen there. 149th Street, according to the capital improvement plan, is going to get four-lane within the next year. So from Casey's to where the house on the south side of the road that you don't like, and how that got built, and who said what, and that doesn't affect our decision today at all, is going to be commercial. It's going to develop as something. You're going to fight this fight going forward, so, and I got yelled at on the phone by a multitude of people when I tried to explain that we can't control what's coming, but we can mitigate the things that would really hurt your feelings, like a Taco Bell, or a bar, or a dispensary, or, 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 or. I don't know the applicant, I don't know Mr. Morris very well. We've talked a couple of times. They've agreed to a rock, I mean, a brick structure with no ethos. They've moved the building to the front, turned it around, made the lights to where they don't shine in your house. I mean, it would be pretty simple to put gates up across your entryways to keep kids out after you leave. You'd probably want to do that anyway, because right now it's a pretty remote area. I wouldn't want people running around behind my building at night either. So, development's coming. I don't disagree about the, the, getting real specific on what has to happen here, but I think, for the most part, I'm okay with this. If they have agreed to all these things that we have taken out of there. And another thing that I want to make sure, and I don't know how to legislate this, but there is a volleyball facility at Indian Hills Road and Sunny Lane. And this thing is a 40,000 square foot metal building that every hour has 250 people coming and going out of it, because there's 12-year-old girls playing volleyball in there all day long and late into the evening. That's not going to happen here. I mean, if that's what your intentions are, then all of a sudden I'm against this. There doesn't need to be 27 games of volleyball going in that last an hour, and you got people coming and going all day long. This road can't handle that, even if it gets to be four-lane. But as Mr. Morris explained, you're going to have a couple pickleball courts, you're going to have a basketball court, you're going to be a gym. I said nine o'clock, you said 11 o'clock. I'm willing to go to 10 o'clock, but 11 o'clock's too late. But I'm one of eight, so there's lots of votes here and lots of voices, so...
Other thoughts, Commissioner? Or go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm, I mean, I basically said what I had to say. I don't know that I did it very well, but...
I think you did, I mean, and I think...
Word five doesn't ever have anything like this, so this is real new territory for me, especially taking out uses on, on different zoned areas.
The question I guess I have, is, the one thing that, that caught, what you're saying, is that if that's what this is going to be, you're against it. Nothing about what we're going to do here today, if we choose to approve it, is going to prevent them from having volleyball tournaments with 12-year-olds.
And that's, that's why I said I'm not sure how to legislate that.
Yeah.
I mean, the occupancy inside the building may be something that we can legislate further on down the road. First off, they don't have enough parking to have 250 people coming and going at all times of the day. I mean, this thing out on Sunny Lane's got acres of parking. You know, I mean, what do you have, 40 parking spaces?
Yeah, thereabouts, yeah.
So, I mean, you're kind of limited on what you can allow in there, just by the sheer number of parking spaces you have. But I'm interested to hear what the rest of you have to say.
Other thoughts, Commissioners?
And I agree, it's an odd place for a gym, but it starts somewhere.
Yeah, that, I mean...
And would you rather have a gym or a dispensary across the street from your house?
Sure, sure. My, my discomfort, I think, with it right now is that I, I can't really see what's on these boards very well from here. It's, it's pretty hazy, and I, I kind of see an inconsistency between that aerial site plan and the one on the other side.
Well, and that would...
Here's one parking layout. Let's see the other side. It's not the same parking layout, it's not even close to the same. So I, which one is it?
Yeah, and, and that would be, and that would also potentially be addressed by requiring the specific plan. That they have to come back to us and say, no, you're legally bound to do exactly what you're showing us on paper.
I would support, absolutely, I would support that.
And I, I definitely support that. I'm also not seeing in my staff report, and I'm, I certainly could have missed it, where we have the time limits in place for the hours of operation.
That was a conversation between me and Mr. Morris. I didn't see that either, but that's, was a conversation between me and Mr. Morris yesterday.
I think it is certainly the fact that there have been a lot of promises made and comments about this and that, and how it'll work, that are not reflected in the text. And, I mean, I actually haven't read the, the master design statement itself.
Of course I did.
But, so I'm, I'm relying on the staff report. But I, I think at a minimum, we need to have a master design statement that very specifically reflects, in black and white, in the text, these promises that are being made about all these things, about, you know, the time, the hours of operation, about the layout, about where the parking's going to be, all of that stuff. I mean, it's, it's one thing to make promises, but, you know, 20 years from now, somebody's looking at this, saying, telling somebody what they can and can't build on this property, that's what's going to control, not who said what, when.
Yep.
What, how do you feel, Commissioner Hinkle, about taking two weeks? And going back, revising the statement, let's get it in black and white, what they expect. And I would, in order for my vote, in order for me to even consider voting yes, specific plan would have to be in this, like...
Excuse me, Commissioner Pennington?
Site, site.
Sorry. Commissioner Pennington, the specific plans are only for PUD.
Oh, so we can't do it?
They can require, you can require.
We can require that, yes, we can.
Okay.
They are specifically required for PUD, but we can, we can...
We can create that additional, so we, we feel confident that that's...
Yes.
Okay.
Would you be willing for that?
Sure, we don't have a problem with that.
Well, it sounds to me like...
Well, what would, so would we be getting together and having a meeting and going through this? Is that what we're talking about?
You, me, and the city.
Yeah.
You, me, and the city?
Staff needs to be included in those conversations.
I mean, the city would have to be the one to help you craft that language, because that would not come from me.
Okay.
And it would be a, I mean, everything we talked about here is basically what we're talking about, writing down in a specific plan. Here's what the building's going to set, here's what it's going to look like, here's our hours of operation, here's, I mean...
Okay, and it would...
Like I said, we take these uses out of it to, you know, keep a Taco Bell from going. I keep picking on Taco Bell, let's say Taco Mayo, a Whataburger.
How come bueno? How come Taco Bueno's not in there?
But, and the other side of that is, I mean, if you, I've said this so many times, if, if you guys don't do this, and a year from now that road four-lanes, and the city decides to zone it all C3, then you get what you get. I mean, the uses in C3 are way, way, way harsher than, harsher is the wrong word, I mean, C3's everywhere.
More intense.
More intense, yeah.
Way more intense than, than a gym that closes at nine or 10 o'clock at night, that has 40 cars in the parking lot, that locks its gates and the lights aren't shining in your windows. And I'm not trying to be mean, I drive that road all the time. In fact, my friend lives on Penn, he was the last house that got blown away in the tornado, and helped him rebuild it. So, I'm real familiar with that area down there. This is an unusable piece of property. I, I find it odd that you're going to develop this.
The first challenge we have with it
Yes.
is to get something that, you know, that we're, if, if we can find it and, and do the drainage study and get it out of the floodplain, and then that's another big step. And so, there's a number of steps involved in this, and this is just the first one. So I don't think it's, timing-wise, something that they got to have today, so we'd be willing to meet and do that.
When would we move that out to, because I'm not going to be here next week?
11:10.
To November the 10th?
Sure. And then I, and then I'd ask, you know, for you to take responsibility for sharing the revisions with the neighbors and to continuing respectfully...
And, and the, I'm not going to pick on the neighbors, but the neighbors aren't a very cohesive group. I got calls from 15 different people that didn't all say the same thing. So, a point of contact from the neighborhood that will disperse that information, instead of... The first lady I talked to, I don't remember what her name was, but she told me that the house that got built that you guys don't like, well, they didn't really have to come talk to us about that, but they did, and then we weren't happy about how they built the house, but they really didn't have to get our permission anyway. Well, okay, the city approved it, so, I mean, they're not your HOA. You don't have any legs to stand on about how the house got built, and you don't like it, but that's how you're basing your opinion on everything else, is something that's kind of not relative to this at all, at all. I mean, if that house was built by Kamal, it'd still be, in somebody's opinion, a good-looking house, and somebody's opinion, not, but it, it doesn't have anything to do with this. So, if you're willing to take that continuance, I'm out next week, but I'll get, I mean, I've got your phone number, you got mine, we can sit down with the city staff, we can work our way through this to make... If the neighborhood wants to put up a representative, who would want to be a part of that conversation, to make you feel more at ease, that would be fine with me.
Yep.
But, and I don't want to make anybody mad, but it's coming, and I'm trying to help you mitigate how bad it can be when it actually gets here.
And I would say, in this discussion, assuming there is consensus with the commission to take the two weeks and, and work through some of these issues. The facade, and being clear about what materials are allowed. Any traffic mitigation and parking flow, the lights, the screening between that property and the neighborhood to the southeast. All of those, and then requiring the specific plan, so that at the end of the day, before anybody can build anything, we're going to see the exact, specific renderings of what will be there and how it will be laid out.
And where.
And where, yes. So, I would, I would certainly want to see all those things addressed when you brought it back. Again, assuming there's consensus that this is what we want.
Are we talking about actually expanding this to a PUD now? Is that what we're saying?
No, the, we're just talking about the requirements that are already in here, making sure that we're addressing with greater specificity what, what your rights would be, should, should we approve this SPUD. Go ahead, Commissioner Claire. Did I hear two weeks? I mean, that we're going, I heard Mr. Hinkle's going to be...
November 11th.
Okay.
November 11th.
November 10th, yeah. November 10th, okay.
Well, then I'm, we're ready, I'll make a motion that we continue this to November 10th in order to write this as a more specific plan.
The motion before the body is to continue this item to the November 10th meeting of this commission for the purposes of further revisions. Is there a second? Second from Commissioner Claire, please, cast your votes when available.
Can we see what he shot? We have here a saving.
Move out of the hall and I'll show it to you.
And that motion has passed, and I'd, I'd ask, and, and I'm more than happy to visit with any neighbors who are concerned, and I'm certain that staff can connect you with my information, happy to visit with anyone, but we have to continue on with the agenda that we have here today. And so, I believe that the, the applicant is willing to visit with you all outside as well. We are now ready for item 29.
29 is SPUD 1449, application by Cascade Holdings and others to 500 Northwest 31st Street, from R2 to Spud 1449.
Good afternoon, Caitlin Turner, 522 Cold Court Drive. This is an application for an SPUD. The property is currently zoned R2, and the base zoning will be kept R2. This application is to permit the existing structures to remain and be pulled into conformance, as well as to allow for an administrative lot split. Right now, there's two single-family dwellings along 31st and one quadplex on Walker. The area is surrounded by R2. It's in conformance with the density range as depicted by the comprehensive plan. There are two concerns that I discussed with Commissioner Powers. One regarding dumpster regulations. It'll be standard city services, get taken out to the curb. There's not going to be any kind of dumpster pickup going on with this project. Another is the parking. Each dwelling will have off-street parking. The parking for the quadplex on Walker, there's a alley of sorts along the southern property line that'll take the cars around to a paved parking area behind the quadplex there, and that'll be screened, it'll be fenced off from the single-family units. There are some TEs, which we agree to all of them. The first one, regarding three buildings within this spud shall be deemed to conform to applicable zoning regs. We request to include the word "existing", so the three existing buildings within this spud shall be deemed to conform to any applicable zoning regulations for specificity. And we also request an additional TE to prohibit all signage. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Who suggested prohibiting the signage?
Commissioner Powers.
That be.
Commissioner Powers.
We have, you know, we have this kind of funny thing, we play this game every, every meeting. There's a, there's this great language, and I'm sure the city has their own reasons for doing this, but under signs, it says freestanding signs, and then it says, there'll be an... but under signs, it says freestanding signs, and then it says, they'll be in accordance with the base zoning district. Well, the base zoning district for this doesn't permit signage, so it really should just say, no signs. And I, I just wanna be very clear with people, uh, you know, in my ward who are asking for rezoning, that when it says something like this, what it really means, at least we're gonna say what it really means, is that there's no signage. So they were kind enough to see that my way, and that's where we are on that. Um, I, there was one other issue, um. Oh, no, we decided we were, we were resolved with that.
Yes.
Um, yeah, there was a thing about baby dumpsters, but we're not gonna do dumpsters, so it doesn't matter. Um, I, this is, this is an existing situation. I was astonished to learn that they have to do this, but, you know, that happens all over my ward too, so. Um, this is all, all they're doing is bringing the zoning into conformance with what's there. Uh, they're gonna get the, the parking off the street, which is a, a big issue with any kind of infill development. Um, and I, you know, I've been looking at this kind of in half-state for a long, long time. I'll be really glad to see it done, so. Um, is there anybody here who wants to be heard on this item? I'd be really surprised if there is.
Doesn't appear so. Any commissioners wishing to be heard on this item as well?
Anybody, anybody wanna say anything? Okay, I'm gonna just go ahead then and move for approval. Item number 29, SPUD 1449, and congratulate Ms. Turner, she did a great job.
And would that includes the amendments to TE1?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, there's a, yes, yes, yes.
To change the language in TE1 to three existing buildings within this spud? And then to add TE4 prohibiting any signage?
Maybe that's what was sticking in my brain. The, the, the issue being, it's, it, we're not gonna say that forever, no matter what occurs on this, uh, lot is okay. We're just saying that the existing buildings are gonna be deemed to be, um, to meet applicable regulations. And yes, T, add TE4, no signage, uh, I think that's good, yes.
So the motion before the commission is to, uh, recommend approval of SPUD 1449 to City Council, with the amendments to the technical evaluations read into the record. It's been seconded by Commissioner Privet, please cast your votes when available. Thanks for. Thanks for hanging in there. Well, the, the motion does pass, good, congratulations, you had a 100% today.
Well, one more, actually.
Oh, one more? Oh, okay, all right, item 30.
Item 30, spud 1450, application by Pedro. Pedro Escavault, rezone 1500 Northeast 9th Street from R2 to PUD 1450.
Okay, once more, Caitlin Turner, 522 Cold Court Drive. This is another application to rezone existing property on 9th and Bath Avenue to an SPUD, keeping the base zoning of R2. Uh, as you can see in the zoning map, it is surrounded by R2. This application is to permit a quadplex, so the structure will remain, they will do renovations, allowing that to happen. Again, in conformance with the density range in the comp plan. Um, you do have a revised site plan in front of you. The only thing changing really is the parking structure, so you see included there a, uh, handicap accessible parking space along 9th Street. Also bringing us to that first TE, so parking spaces four and five, which are parking spaces three and four on that revised site plan on Bath Avenue. We are not able to agree that they shall be removed, so what's currently there, which would be the other exhibit that you all have, is a concrete structure. It's a part of the foundation of the home, it's a part of the, uh, structural integrity, so that actually cannot be removed. So we are wanting to continue to use that as two parking spaces, two parking off of Bath Avenue.
The whole bunch of, sorry.
Best utilized for what it's been used for, so we request that that remain. Um, and then the second TE, we do agree to, there have been no protests, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, this is my ward, and I will say that I'm pleased that more develop, is, development is occurring, especially since we're just gonna use the existing structure. Um, yes, it does increase the density, but it uses the same structure. So, um, I certainly understand after looking at these visuals, um, that it makes sense to keep the, the, um, parking spaces, but happy to hear from staff if, if there are any, you know, objections, um, that they have about that. But, um, I think, I think it's a great project, and I'm glad it's moving forward. Any questions, comments from commissioners? Any question, anyone in the audience wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I think we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Commissioner, since this is your ward, Mr. Chairman, I'll move to recommend approval of City Council for SPUD 1450.
Uh, Commissioner, uh, Claire has moved to recommend approval of SPUD 1450 to City Council. And let's see if we have a second. Seconded by Commissioner Noble, please cast your votes when available. That's kinda worked. Hope. Commissioner Claire?
I voted yea.
Mr. Hinkle?
He's out.
He's absent.
We wore him out.
And, uh, has, you got the final vote? Did I miss it? Okay, it is approved. Item 31.
Item 31 is PC 10841.
Oh, I'm so sorry, did, was, can we amend that TE on the previous application? I apologize, regarding the parking spaces being kept?
Let's go ahead and make a new motion to, um, remove TE1. That was the, that was the point, right?
Apologies.
Remove TE1 from, um, SPUD 1450. That's the motion, I think.
She was doing so good.
Yeah, correct.
The motion from Commissioner Claire is to remove TE1 and recommend approval of SPUD 1450. Is there a second?
Can we do that?
I guess we'll have to wait until there's.
Those are some kind of voting.
Sorry, I'm making things more difficult up there.
You don't get, you don't get two votes on each item. Poor Thad, he's getting a trial by fire here.
He's doing a great job. Thad's doing a great job.
You are, you're doing a great job.
Push.
Sort of.
Yeah.
I can't.
It'd be Nate.
Mine won't be second.
I did move, it's waiting, it's telling me it's waiting for a second.
Mine all say move, 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 okay.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay, all right, well, we've got, yes, there we go, we got it.
It's all your fault, Caitlin, you caught this.
Still counting this as 100% for the day.
Gotta make your work for it.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, we ready for 31?
And we're ready for item 31.
PC, PC 10841, application by Philip and Annette Porter to rezonate 2900 North Portland from C3 and R1 to C3.
Hello, uh, my name is Therese Broad, I'm here on behalf of my parents, Philip and Annette Porter. Um, 2900 North Portland Avenue in Oklahoma. Um, we currently own an empty residential lot adjacent to our automotive shop, which is currently being unused. Um, we are requesting that it be converted to the C3 Community Commercial District in order to build a storage garage for overflow vehicles. Um, this will reduce the number of vehicles sitting uncovered, as well as minimize the amount of vandalism, which is in our shop in recent years. This change will improve the aesthetics of the area by reducing vehicle clutter, and will also add productivity.
Thank you, and, and just to be clear, cause we kinda, we've, I don't, I know you've been here a while, so I apologize.
No, it's okay.
Um, but you may recall that we had a similar discussion several, several items ago, um, regarding that, the fact that this is a request to directly change the zoning to C3.
Yes.
Versus a more specialized, um, type of zoning in SPUD that would allow us to make more amendments and make sure, we understand that you have a very specific purpose for this, but if we approve this zoning to C3, it's, it would allow all kinds of unanticipated, um, uh, things to be allowed if we were to rezone it. I don't know if you've worked out, are you open to an SPUD? I don't know if you've had.
We had not been able to talk before the meeting today.
Okay.
So this is all news.
I jumped ahead, sorry.
All news to her, I'm sure. Yes, this is, the, the rezoning of this property to a straight C3 would be extremely problematic, in my view. Um, and I think it would be a great idea for us to take, and we can take just two weeks.
Yep.
And sort through whether we're even gonna be able to do an SPUD or not. If they're willing, and we can work out those, then we can, you know, push it off further in terms of timing. But if, if we wanna just take two weeks and sort that out, um, I, I wouldn't expect her to agree or disagree with that on behalf of her parents today, so. Um, I, I think that would be my recommendation.
And, and the reasoning being, again, you could sell this property tomorrow, we understand that you have a specific purpose in mind, but if you sold this property to someone else, this, this zoning stays with the land. So it could be that another person could come after you and tear down your, your plans and do something new that's unanticipated. And so this would allow us to protect the neighborhood and to ensure that, that, um, your, your desired plan is, is what is, what actually occurs versus all this multitude of options, um, that are included in C3. Are you open to that?
Um, yeah, we're open to that, my dad's back there, sorry.
Okay, okay, dad approves, then, then I guess that's good. Then I think we're ready for a motion for a continuance, unless there's anyone in the audience wishing to be heard, or the commission?
I'll move that we continue item number 31, PC 10841. Two weeks, I don't know what that date is.
27.
Do we have someone here wishing to be, wishing to be heard on this item? Oh, please, go ahead, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to rush through. But you do understand we were about to vote to continue it to the next, to the next meeting.
No, I, you actually addressed about 50% of my comments.
Oh.
So I've spoken with Mr. Powers before, and, uh, I've, we've discussed the possibility of meeting with the applicant.
This is Mr., this is Mr. John Silver, come forward.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm John Silver.
He lives across the street.
Oh, okay, good, okay.
I'm John Silver, I live at 3620 Northwest 28, uh, directly across the street from the property in question. My wife was raised in the house next door and owns at 3624. We've lived there for 48 years. Had many dealings with the applicant through the years, he's been a good neighbor, we just disagree on this. But you've addressed many things, Ms. Powers, we've talked about that, so I, I would be in favor of the, the delay.
Okay, great, and you'll be a part of these discussions, so we might actually make somebody happy today. You know, at least once. Okay, the motion before the body is to, uh, continue PC 10841 to the October...
7.
27th meeting of this commission. It's been seconded by Commissioner Privet, please cast your votes when available. And it is approved, we're ready for item 32.
Item 32 is PC 10842, application by Kruger Real Property to rezone 990 Southeast 104th Street from AA to RA2.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Cold Court Drive. Uh, this is an RA2 application, very similar to the application that you heard and considered that, on that track south and west of the property. Jared, would you mind going back to the zoning map? Um, that application was recommended for approval unanimously by Planning Commission approximately six weeks ago. Uh, two weeks ago, it went to City Council where it was approved unanimously. So what we have is an RA2, next to RA2, across the street from RA. In addition, PUD 1454 allows one acre lot. So the RA2, of course, is limited to two acre lots, so we would ask for your approval, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Um, this is in, um.
My ward.
Okay, Ward 4.
Yep, um, so these, we've been seeing them a long time, but, um, over the, the years, I've kinda, uh, got more of an opinion on these, that they need to be at least two, two acres to be even considered here, I think. And this meets that, um, uh, and we did approve the one just adjacent to it, but, um, I'm okay with it.
Excellent. Any other questions, comments from commissioners for the applicant? Anyone else wanting to be heard on this item? I think we're ready.
Okay.
Don't see anybody here to speak, so I'll move, uh, to recommend approval of, where are we on? Uh, PC 10842.
The motion before the commission is to, uh, recommend approval of PC 10842 to City Council. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers, please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes. We're now ready for item 33.
Item 33, PUD 1900, application by Princey D LLC to rezone 3301 Harriet Street from double A to PUD 1900.
One last time, David Box, 522 Cold Court Drive. This is a strange one, um, if it looks familiar, it should. You recommended approval unanimously of this pud, uh, in June. Uh, the PUD allows for five total lots. We have one lot that is approximately five acres on the west side. Jared, do you have the site plan within your? There we go, so the tract one is, uh, 5.03 acres, tract two are one-plus acre lots. When we got to, you'll remember there were some neighbors here concerned with the streets. Uh, we continued to meet with the neighbors when we got to City Council, we actually revised the pud. If you recall, there's a lot of tree cover, so we changed the setback from lender to 80 feet. So to, to further, um, encourage that tree preservation along there. Um, yeah, there you go. And so we've doubled the setback from what we originally had thought. The only remaining issue was the street network. It was discovered through, uh, multiple continuacies at City Council that the streets are actually private. It was the desire of the council to send it back so that you could consider the application with the framework of, these are private streets. Uh, of course, my opinion is, private streets makes it a bit easier because it's a private matter. Um, the density is in line with what's out there. It's actually a bit of a unique situation in that it's urban low under the comp plan. So if sewer were to ever get there, of course, we wouldn't be seeking one acre and five acre lots, it would be something much more dense. Uh, so we think it's compatible with the area, staff does recommend approval, and there are no technical evaluations.
Thank you, this is my ward, and, um, I did participate in one, at least one meeting with the neighbors. They were very, um, open, it was a very constructive conversation, but sometimes these conversations can get very ugly. Um, and so there was a lot of willingness on their part and the applicant's part to try to find a way to work things out, so I, I do applaud them for that. Um, and I'm still in support, as I was previously, and for me, the fact that these are private streets only makes it easier for me to vote yes on, on this. Um, so, um, I guess they'll have to work out that, that issue with the streets, but, I mean, it just speaks to the importance of us addressing this in the long run, about private streets and how they, they get adopted and how we can avoid being in these kinds of situations in the future. So I'm in support, and, um, yeah. Any questions, comments from commissioners for the applicant? Anyone wishing to be heard on this item in, in, in the audience? Seeing none, I think we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, uh, move and recommend approval of the application.
Commissioner Claire moves to recommend approval of PUD 1900 to City Council. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers, please cast your votes when available.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, point for clarification, these are not house shoes, these are loafers, and my wife, my wife advised me this morning.
I didn't even see them.
That they were, that they were professional enough, so I will be, uh, taking that up with her this evening.
You've been blaming, you blame your wife now, you blame your dad now, hold on, I need to talk to both of them, what?
What do you got there?
Do we see these shoes?
Are those moccasins?
We just need socks.
Are those moccasins? Did you sew those yourself? Oh. No socks, no socks, he's going socks-less.
Is she watching? Okay, we, uh, that concludes our items, uh, requiring separate vote. Are, there are no other additional items, we're now in line for communications and reports, Planning Commission committees, I don't believe there are any reports, Planning Commission members, anyone?
Uh, I just wanna take another opportunity to thank Ms. Paula Hurst for her service, and she will be missed, and I also wanna welcome Thad.
Yeah, Thad, we're glad you're here.
Great job.
Commissioner Powers?
No, my brain stopped working.
Commissioner Freely. Commissioner Privet, I understand you have an announcement.
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. Um, one thing, and I recused myself from this case a long time ago, back in last December, it keeps getting continued. Um, I know I've heard from constituents or whatever that they're, you know, tired of being in continued and wanna know what's going on, so I kinda wanted to know, uh, on item 38, if there's.
My understanding is that because it's been deferred indefinitely, it will have to be re-noticed. So at this point, they, they can stop panicking because they'll get a new notice.
All right, I'll tell them that. And the other thing, um, due to work and stuff, I'm gonna have to resign my seat on, uh, BOA, so.
So I don't know what the formal process is for filling in that position, JJ, Sarah, anyone?
Yeah, we would just appoint somebody, you know, like.
Notify the mayor.
Oh, the mayor picks?
Yeah.
But it has to be one of us, right?
It, yeah, the. Yeah, the seat requires a planning commission seat.
I volunteer in the past.
So, if anyone's interested in some more responsibility, you know, if being here till five oh-six is still not enough for you, you can get some more at the BOA.
Well, the good thing is, most of the time, BOA, you're out of there pretty early, so.
Okay, now, I don't want anybody abandoning the commission so that it can be permanently on BOA, it's contingent on your membership, on the planning commission.
It is an interesting board, I learned a lot on it, so, there is that.
Well.
Taught me a bunch.
If we have a volunteer, it's time to think about it, we can send your name to the mayor, maybe he'll consider you. Anything else, Commissioner Privet? I have, Commissioner Govine, am I pronouncing your name correctly?
You are, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure.
Govin? I did, it's not worth taking the time to speak to the court. It's a good day for repurposing schools and other existing buildings, so I'm glad we got to do that, tough day for gyms, and tough day for David Box's shoes, but anyways.
But a good day.
He'll get over it, he'll live, I think he'll be fine, he probably paid two hundred dollars for those things.
Commissioner Noble?
I'll just say that I will look forward to resolving the public-private street driveway issues.
Yes, I wanna understand that a lot better, too.
And I will.
A little nitty, a little too strong, the words.
Addressing the issue.
More confusion.
I just would like to assure you all that I have never continued case whatsoever, I promise.
I wasn't aware we had that individual power, because there's several ones that I would've loved to have continued for seventeen years and never have to think about it again, so, yeah, I hope that we can work with staff, JJ, Sarah, on, you know, let's find, figure out how to get ready for a study session on this issue, I do think it would be very helpful, and I would like, certainly love to, as we're, before we go into the study session, for us to go in with ideas about what we'd wanna see, and maybe we could also work with the development community as well, so we can get their feedback upfront, so, that's certainly something I'm happy to work on, and if anybody, again, is interested in being on the BOA, we'd love to have your name, and appreciate Commissioner Privet for all of his sacrifices over the years to do that, it's not easy to do that and this, it's hard enough to do this, so, we certainly appreciate it. Planning Department? Municipal Counselor's Office is not here, are there any citizens wishing to be heard? Barry Dustin, Curtis, okay?
This commission is not being viewed.
When's your last day on the BOA, Commissioner Privet?
I mean, last, I hope I can make the next, I hope I can make the next meeting, but I'm not positive at this point, so.
Okay.
I take on my, you know, I'm fully into my new position on Monday, so, I haven't really even gotten, scratched the surface yet on what it's gonna take for, as far as time for me, so.
Cool.
But I'll try to be at next week's if I can, but if I can't, then I'll let somebody know.
All right, no citizens to be heard, no other business, and seeing as we have reached the end of this agenda, I now declare that the commission is adjourned, and be the first one to bang the gavel here, since I don't even think the mayor does, so I'll, you know.